Good. Call this meeting to order, March 5th, 2024. Please stand and join us for the Pledge of Allegiance. Right. Good morning, everyone. We do have a quorum present with all five commissioners in attendance today. Commissioners, we have had a couple of changes to the agenda this morning. The first being that we need to add an additional item under our executive session today to discuss a legal matter. And we also need to remove item C7 under the action and presentation items, which was intended for the MOU between Avengers Soccer and the county. Sounds like some additional work is needed there, so we'll bring this back at a later date. But if there's no questions on either of those amendments, I would entertain a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
It's removed.
A motion by Commissioner Richards. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Slaughter. Any discussion? Hearing none. All is in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, nay? Motion's unanimous. First, under Tab A, today, we have a public hearing for the renewal of the 2024 liquor licenses. And with us this morning is Clerk Lane. Morning to you.
Morning Chairman, Commissioners. Having a little broadcast issue right now, but Jennifer's working on it. Before you, you have the notice of application to Sweetwater County for the renewal and new retail liquor licenses that has been published in the newspaper as required. I can read the ones for county retail liquor license and then go down each section. I don't know if you want to approve each section as we go or do it all in one motion.
Mr. Chairman, I need to recuse myself from the care distributing liquor license. So if we do them individually, maybe that would work better, then I can just recuse myself from that one.
Okay.
Okay, so first, we have AHJT Enterprises LLC doing business as White Mountain Mining. These are for the county retail liquor licenses. Buckboard Marina at Flaming Gorge, doing business as Buckboard Marina. Fast Stop, DBA Cruel Jacks, The Hub, DBA Mustang Travel Stop. Irish Cowboy LLC doing business as Green River RV Park. Kier Distributing, DBA Kelly's Hitching Post. Lalene Miller, DBA Mitch's. Little America Hotels and Resorts, doing business as Little America. Loves Travel Stops and Country Stores, DBA Loves Travel Stop. Barley Mercantile, doing business as Point Bar. Eden Saloon and RV Park LLC, doing business as Eden Saloon. Those are your county retail liquor licenses.
Any questions on the county retail liquor license applications, Commissioners?
I can't think of any hard questions for you this time.
I know, and I didn't bring my list, so I was like hoping you didn't have any.
Probably have to have a public hearing before we vote on these, I assume.
Yes, this is a, you need to do that for a public hearing.
With that, I'd open up the public hearing in regards to, lost my spot here, the county retail liquor licenses as presented. If there's anyone online or in the audience that would like to speak to these, now is the appropriate time. Seeing and hearing none, we will close the public hearing. Commissioners, what's your pleasure?
Mr. Chairman, I would move to approve these county retail liquor licenses.
Do you have a motion to approve the county retail liquor licenses by Commissioner Slaughter? Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Jones. Any discussion? Hearing none. All is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Mr. Chairman, I am an aye vote on all of them except for care distributing.
Very good. Motion passes with one abstention. And Commissioner Richards, hand it back to you.
Okay, so next, we have our county restaurant liquor licenses. We have one, that is Purple Sage Ventures, doing business as The Login.
Questions on the county restaurant liquor license, Commissioners? Not at open up a public hearing. If there's anyone online or in the audience that would like to speak to the single county restaurant liquor license, now would be the appropriate time. Seeing and hearing none, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing. And Commissioners, what's your pleasure?
Mr. Chairman, I would move to approve the county restaurant liquor license for applicant Purple Sage Ventures LLC.
Have a motion to approve by Commissioner Slaughter. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Richards. Any discussion? Hearing none. All is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay?
Mr. Chairman, I do have a question. How many available licenses are left in the county?
I knew you were just gonna ask me that, and I think we're pretty close, but I can find that out for you. I think there was one, and we, and I don't know of any new places, but I can look that up for you.
Thank you. You do, I think.
I knew you would. I was waiting.
County restaurant liquor license is unanimous. I'll hand it back to you, Clerk Lane.
All right, next, we have the county retail malt beverage permit for the period of April 10 through April 9 of 2025. We have Crossroads Travel Plaza, doing business as Crossroads Travel Plaza. Eaton Investments, DBA Farsen Feed Store. Little America Corporation, DBA Little America. Mustang Travel Stop LLC, doing business as Mustang Travel Stop. And Roger D. Barley, DBA Point Merc.
Questions, Commissioners? Not at open up a public hearing for the county retail malt beverage permit applications. If there's anyone online or in the audience that would like to speak to these, now would be the appropriate time. Seeing and hearing none, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing. Commissioners, what's your pleasure?
Mr. Chairman, I would move to approve the county retail malt beverage permits as brought before us.
Have a motion to approve by Commissioner Slaughter. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Jones. Any discussion? Hearing none. All is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Motion's unanimous.
Okay, last, we have the county limited retail liquor license. That would be Rolling Green Country Club, doing business as Rolling Green Country Club.
Questions, Commissioners? Hearing none, we will open up a public hearing for the county limited retail liquor license application as presented. If there's anyone online or in the audience that would like to speak to this one, now is the appropriate time. Seeing and hearing none, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing. Commissioners, what's your pleasure?
Mr. Chairman, I would move to approve a county limited retail liquor license for Rolling Green Country Club.
Have a motion to approve by Commissioner Slaughter. Do we have a second?
All second.
Second by Commissioner Toman. Any discussion? Hearing none. All is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Motion's unanimous.
All right, thank you.
Thanks, Cindy. Appreciate it. Moving right along in the agenda, Commissioners, this brings us to the county resident comments and concerns portion of the agenda. This time, if there's any member of the public, either online or in the audience today, that would like to address the governing body on any issues, now would be the appropriate time. Seeing none, we'll go ahead and close the county resident comments and concerns portion of the agenda and move us right along into Tab B. Corey, this morning, Commissioners, are six items under the consent agenda, first being the approval of the February 20th, 2024 minutes. The approval of the county vouchers and warrants, approval of the bonds, monthly reports, abates and rebates, and a letter of interest to the industrial siding division for Project West. Are there any requests to remove any of the items on the consent agenda? If not, I'd entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
So moved.
A motion by Commissioner Richards. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Jones. Any discussion? Hearing none. All is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Motion's unanimous. Moving right along, about 20 minutes ahead, so that'll be good for Mary's report today. We do have Commissioner comments up next, and it looks like Commissioner Richards is heading us off.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good morning, Commissioners. I think I might trump Mary on this one. I've got a lot to report. First off, I'd like to congratulate Barbara Smith on being named Wyoming's poet laureate. What a great honor for a great poet and a great person. Second, I want to congratulate the Western Wyoming Community College Wrestling Team on their back-to-back national championships, as well as Coach Art Castillo on being named Coach of the Year. Fantastic jobs all around. On a more somber note, I'd like to briefly recognize the passing of Ann and Nell Johnson. If you didn't know who Ms. Johnson was, it's because you haven't looked at into the audience of a local public meeting around Sweetwater County for the last, I don't know, couple of decades. I've never met anyone who was so interested in watching how her government worked, remembering her smiling and curious face in the audience. So many public meetings will always make me want to do my job better and forever remind me of who I do it for. My prayers and sympathies go out to her family and friends. I've been a little bit busy since I saw all of you last. Right after our meeting on February 20th, I attended my first air quality advisory board meeting, where I received a comprehensive battery of training and received a lot of background on probably one of the driest topics that you could possibly engage in, and that is federal regulation of air quality and Wyoming's ongoing struggle to comply with it. As a board, we'll meet quarterly, and with the constant state of flux that EPA regulations are in, I'm sure we'll be constantly busy. Later that same evening, I attended the library board meeting at the Rock Springs Library. I relayed to them some of the consensus that we had reached during our budget discussions at our own meeting, and they were appreciative of the early guidance. They don't anticipate any significant changes to their budget this year, but they do have some capital needs that they'll be working with the Capital Committee to pursue. On the 21st, I joined staff and remotely attended a meeting with representatives from the Castle Rock Hospital District, as well as Mr. Tolson, the economist from Industrial Siding, to ask questions and get some feedback from Industrial Siding regarding the best ways to identify impacts and apply for those funds. Later on, the 21st, Chairman West and I joined staff on a tour of one of Southwest Counseling's many facilities, followed by a meeting with members of their organization to discuss possible industrial siding impacts. That meeting ran a bit long, so I was late joining Commissioner Slaughter here at the courthouse for a discussion regarding reservations at Crossroads Park. I walked in as they were all getting up to walkout. It looks like me not being there helped, because they seem to have had a productive meeting and found some ways forward. And on the day since, I guess we've had some new setbacks, but I'll let Commissioner Slaughter provide any details as he sees fit on that one. On the 22nd, I spent the day at the Capitol, giving my family a tour and visiting with members of our delegation in both bodies of the legislature. It's been a whirlwind budget session for them, with the first couple of weeks being pretty combative, and that continues through today, especially between the two bodies. You could probably cut the tension in the quarter separating them with a knife. I appreciate the work that all of them are doing on our behalf, though. It's a tough and thankless job. And despite ridiculous comments, I've seen to the contrary, I know that all of them have the best interests of our community at heart. As they come back this weekend, I encourage everyone to take whatever opportunity you have to visit with them and give them a chance to explain and discuss their votes with you. None of it is ever as cut and dry as they make it sound in the headlines of the Cowboy State Daily. And please, please do not let anonymous ratings websites tell you which of your representatives are not conservative or too conservative or fence sitters or whatever catchphrases they're using to get your attention. If any of their decisions were easier, if there was just one correct decision, we wouldn't have to send 93 of them to Cheyenne to hash it all out. On the 26th, I joined staff in a meeting with Green River City Administrator, with the Green River City Administrator, to discuss Project West impacts. Shortly after that, Commissioner Slaughter joined us for another impacts discussion, this time with Chief Kitchener from Fire District Number One. Also, on the 26th, I attended the monthly joint powers communications board meeting, where they approved their preliminary budget and approved an ongoing maintenance contract for their HVAC system. At Mayor Mickelson's request, we're playing some musical chairs with our appointees to that board. So I spent some time last weekend, this morning, working on that, but it looks like we're gonna be able to do some of that today. On the 27th, we had more impact meetings, this time with Mayor Valerio from Granger, and a follow-up meeting with Southwest Counseling regarding their preliminary requests. Later that evening, I attended the Fair Board Meeting at the Events Complex, along with Commissioner Slaughter, where Director Pendleton presented the board the 2023 report, as well as a preview of the master plan being developed by KO Planners. I'm sure Candy will be discussing a lot of that later this morning, so I won't steal her thunder. I also discussed our preliminary budget consensus with them, and they also appreciated their early guidance. On the 29th, I attended the Federal Partners Meeting at the Rock Springs Chamber of Commerce. I know, I know Mary's jumping at the bit to tell us what happened at that meeting, so I won't, I won't get, say anything about that. Then yesterday, Commissioner Slaughter and I joined Eric for another one of his four-hour, one-hour meetings, where we went through all the preliminary impact requests, followed up with some of them, as well as met with counsel for Project West on some related issues. We also met again this morning to visit with the hospital regarding their request and to review another one that came in overnight. Right now, requests through the county are totaling around 15 million, though we're gonna have, we're gonna have to trim some of that. There's about 25 million worth of available impact funds identified in the siding application. And if you extrapolate some of their numbers, they expect about half of the impact to be in Sweetwater County. I think that 50% is a bit on the low side, and my guess is that we will probably be a little closer to 60 to 65% of the impact. Our requests are gonna be well under that, so I'm sure they'll be easily defendable as long as we can keep a handle on them. I want to mention how helpful it's been through the process to have Commissioner Slaughter and Chairman West available to attend meetings with me and help out with this pretty intensive process. As with everything that relates to being a commissioner, learning the industrial siding process works, how it works is, it's kind of like jumping into the deep end of the pool with dive weights are tied around your waist. And without their help, without Eric and John's experience and guidance, we'd be lost. I can't say enough times or say it loud enough how lucky Sweetwater County is to have the Commissioners and the staff that they do. Speaking of staff, Eric was finally able to fill one of the positions in his office last week. He was able to hire an administrative assistant to be the face of the land use and planning office, hopefully letting him focus, focus more of his time on the emergent projects that keep jumping into his lap. He is still looking for a planner, but a reliable planner is apparently hard to find in this market. That does remind me that Eric has been invited to testify in front of a congressional committee in Washington DC later this month. Representative Hageman's office is going to finance that trip, but I did want to get your opinion. Eric would like to consult with Daniel Betancourt in preparation of his testimony, and that would would add some further expense on our professional services account. I think it's a great idea, and we should give him all the tools that he needs to do this effectively, but I wanted to get your guys' consensus on that. Any thoughts?
Full support here.
Couldn't agree more. Eric's right, man, for the job. I think it's pretty flattering, too. I mean, I don't know how many times somebody from Sweetwater County's been asked to testify in Congress, but probably you can count him on one hand, so you're the man.
I am still working with no one in regards to any Fenera reimbursement, too, so I'm not sure if that'll qualify, but I would assume it may. But either way, we got the money there, and it's well-spent. I think the public would support that as well, so go get them.
Eric, have your answer. Moving forward, we had a meeting scheduled on the afternoon of March 11th to start working out an MOU with the other impacted governments, but it looks like we'll have to move that. A lot of this whole industrial siding discussion will hinge on how reasonable the requests coming from our neighboring counties and their towns will be. Our MOU is due on the 29th, but because our last Commissioners' meeting is well before that, and because the last meetings for the other affected cities and counties are before that as well, not to mention I'm leaving for vacation on the 22nd, it's our plan to have an MOU in front of all of you, ready for approval at our next meeting on the 19th. Later on, the 11th, I plan to attend the Solid Waste District Number One Board Meeting, followed by a Sweetwater County Outdoor Recreation Meeting on the 12th. On the 13th, I'll attend the monthly conference call with the Wyoming County Commissioners Association. On the 14th, the SEDC Advisory Board meets, and on the 18th, the Library Board is scheduled. Scattered throughout, I'll be handling whatever comes our way with industrial siding. Speaking of SEDC, I have some updates from Kayla McDonald, our Economic Development Specialist. At their most recent meeting, the board elected Mark Cowan as their chairman, Reed Clevenger as their vice chairman, and Blaine Tate as their secretary treasurer. SEDC is working with a company to expand operations here in Sweetwater County. They're currently looking at real estate and have narrowed down a location and will begin the process of purchasing the facility. More information on that will be available once we can release who the company is in the coming months. Kayla recently completed her Business Retention and Expansion International Training to become certified as a Business Retention and Expansion Coordinator. This certification will help Kayla lead the efforts and bring a new approach to the program that SEDC is currently building for a BRE program in Sweetwater County. SEDC will welcome Rita Meyer, CEO of Terra Power Wyoming, to join Kayla and Johnny K on March 21st on KREO to talk about the future nature of Nuclear Reactor Project KEMR. And then, starting later this spring, SEDC will be launching a new program in partnership with the Rock Springs and Green River Chambers of Commerce called Lunch with Leaders. More information will be available on that soon, on how to get involved in the program. You know, 14 months ago, a lot of people told me that the first six months to a year of this job would be the hardest, and that once we figured out which meetings we didn't need to go to anymore, our schedules would get lighter. I don't know about any of you, but I don't think my schedule is getting lighter. And I don't think my beautiful, gracious, and forgiving wife Teresa thinks so either. She said, "I was gone more this February than in any other month since taking office, and my mileage shows it." I logged well over 850 miles last month, which I believe is the most since I joined the board. I guess I'll blame that on the extra leap year day. I can't see any other explanation. Speaking of leap year, I also want to congratulate my beautiful goddaughter, Michael, and her husband, on the leap year day birth of their handsome new son, Monroe. Would that make him my god grandson or grand godson? I'm not sure. But I'm excited for him either way, and excited that I only have to buy birthday presents for him every four years. That's how that works, right? I think that's all I have for you, Mr. Chairman. I'm happy to stand for any questions.
Thanks, Commissioner. Great report. Good opening comments, too. I was gonna reach out to Coach Castillo to see if he would come before us at the next meeting, so they can be recognized for their back-to-back victory and back-to-back Coach of the Year Award, too. Congratulations on the, what'd you call it? God grand baby? Yeah, very cool. Any questions for Commissioner Richards' report, Commissioners? Lots of meetings for you. It's starting to sound kind of like a task force, but probably a lot more productive, so great job. There's no other questions? It looks like Commissioner Jones, you're up next.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'll also take some of Mary's time. I guess if we do this right, she won't have time to speak at all today.
Great.
On February 20th, after our last Commission meeting, I attended a Building and Grounds meeting for Royal Hospital, Sweetwater County. Typically, I can't make that meeting, as this Commission meeting tends to run long. Usually, that is thanks to Commissioner Toman. Discussed those topics about being at capacity in the medical office building and the walk-in clinic. As mentioned in some of our previous meetings, revenue is at record highs for MHSC. So along with that comes capacity issues from time to time. Also, on the 20th, I attended the Sweetwater GOP Meeting for Resolutions Platform and Bylaws Committee. On the 21st, I attended the MHSC Quality Committee meeting. Reviewed remission statements from some patients who gave birth and expressed great appreciation for our hospital and its staff and the wonderful care they received. The hospital has turned in their evidence of standards exceptions to the Joint Commission, so now they wait for the letter of accreditation that will follow, which is normal after a joint commission survey. The committee discussed their environment of care and the six management plans successfully evaluated by the Joint Commission. Also, timely and effective care measures. Seven out of eight of those are above last year. Twenty other elements were discussed as being at or above the set goals. When I was on the board, we asked the hospital to work towards steady improvement. We didn't want wild fluctuations and swings in there, but they are doing just that. And so, so many areas at the hospital, they really have focused on steady improvement, and it's paying off in big dividends. Also, on the 21st, attended the Museum Board Meeting. They're moving money to different accounts and banks in order to receive a better return on their money. Also, working on a mock branding event for the youth. So they aren't actually branding anybody, but gonna do a mock event, so that should be kind of fun. They discussed their financial report, cap assessment report, capital projects and exhibits. By the way, for anybody who hasn't seen the exhibit downstairs, please do. It's pretty neat. Got a boat down there from what they started out floating the green on and video, and lots of good information, so take a few minutes and go down there. The following day, on the 22nd, I was on the radio with Al Harrison's Let's Talk Radio Program, where we discussed the BLM RMP. Guess that's not ever going away. Talked about the task force. Commissioner West and myself were appointed to by Governor Gordon. We also discussed future political plans briefly. On February 23rd, I was on KREL Radio with Johnny K to discuss a variety of topics surrounding the Commission and the county and what we're up to. Also, we discussed some future politic plans. Naturally, we discussed the BLM RMP. On the 28th, I attended the Hospital Finance Nautic Committee Meeting. It was an abbreviated meeting, as they had a finance workshop for the board planned. So briefly, they just reviewed a couple of mission moments. So one actually involving a patient who wasn't very happy with the care that was received. The hospital has done an outstanding job of getting with those folks, figuring out what the issue is, working with them to make them happy. That's exactly what happened in this case. Many times, they've actually invited those people to sit on their committees and help make the hospital a better place, and that has really, really paid off. So they're doing a great job with that. This person was somebody from the service industry and actually mentioned hearing nothing but great things about the hospital, so some really good turnarounds up there. January was another record month for revenue at $24.7 million. Also, a positive bottom line for yet another month, several months in a row, so that's good news. And there is a positive bottom line as compared to a loss in the budget at this point. So again, more, more good news and lots of great things happening up there. On the 29th, attended the Joint Telecom Board Meeting. Some pretty mundane items in there, paying bills and approvals of expenses. So that was, that was a short one, so those are kind of nice. On the weekend of March 1st through 3rd, this past weekend, I attended the annual convention for the Wyoming State Snowmobile Association. I'm gonna brag on this for a few minutes, so bear with me. So this convention moves around the state each year, and this year was held in Dubois. I'm the past president of the association, so it's pretty near and dear to my heart. But Friday night consists of check-in and reception, just time spent regrouping with friends from around the state we don't always get to see on a regular basis. Saturday, the Dubois Club provided three different snowmobile rides based on rider ability. My wife Stacy and our daughter joined me with, we chose the intermediate ride. We had an incredible day up around the Brooks Lake Lodge area, found probably two and a half to three feet of fresh powder. It was snow I haven't ridden in in several years, so it was, it was a great day. We had people stuck, kind of looked like a yard sale from time to time, but everybody made it back safe and in one piece. Saturday night is a banquet, and the banquet consists of dinner and auctions to raise funds for the state organization for scholarships and the host club. One of the things I wanted to mention is, there's an auction we do every year that's fun, and it's for scholarships. Most of the money is for scholarships. If that's as high as you're going, I bid 150, you still pay $100. So it ends up being a lot of fun. There's some competitions that end up happening, clubs team up and have a, have a great time. We, in less than 30 minutes, we raised about $30,000 on this Schnapps bottle auction. The key to the bottle is, you get your name etched on it or engraved on it, but you have to bring it back next year. You get your name etched on it or engraved on it, but you have to bring it back next year. So nobody can ever drink it, nobody can ever open it. So you buy a bottle that you just have to. Sit on a shelf for a year and then bring it back. So we raised thirty thousand dollars in less than half an hour. The scholarships were then distributed based on the number of applicants and. The number one applicant received four thousand dollars and the lowest paid scholarship was a thousand dollars. So it's a pretty impressive program. Since inception, we've raised over a quarter of a million dollars. On a bottle of schnapps that can't be opened and must be returned. So it was a great evening. Obviously helps kids, they can use that money for trade schools or college. So, great, great night. Sunday consists of a full morning meeting. It was actually five hours long. And then I got the joyous trip over South Pass, which is probably the worst I've experienced in all my trips over. So. Yesterday, March fourth, I attended the Board Meeting for the M H S C. Normally be held tomorrow, but Irene has. American Hospital Association Meetings to attend this week in Arizona. So they held it a couple of days early. Many of the topics I've already covered, so I don't need to go into all the detail, but the board did approve the one, three and five year strategic plan. Pricing on the lab project this month, so that'll be good to get buttoned down. A really, I think a great story was told to Irene at Green River Chamber Meeting. A gentleman at the meeting said he had had surgery the day before. The surgery is done by the Da Vinci robot. So one day he's in the Da Vinci robot, having surgery the next day, he's at the chamber meeting. That's what that robot was purchased for. It's far less invasive, shorter recovery time. So you're in, you're out and, and your recovery is just so much better. Our community is, has very fortunate to have the Da Vinci robot. As well as the Mako Orthopedic Robots. And both robots have been extremely busy, so very good investments. As a final note, there have been discussions surrounding the idea of sending a contingent of people to Washington DC. To meet with B L M Director Stone Manning. This is different from what Mr. Bingham is doing, but. Senator Doc Stetter contacted Senator Jones on the idea he would also like representation as much as possible from Sweetwater County. My name was one of the names floated. If the trip takes place, and we don't know yet if it will, but. If it takes place, I'm more than happy to attend and represent our county. And our lives here at home. My question would be, do any of you have any concerns or reservations with that?
Have fun.
None here, Commissioner.
I would be very supportive, Commissioner.
Thank you. Well, we'll see if it takes place and that's the end of my report.
Thanks, Commissioner. Good report. That's a very expensive bottle of undrinkable schnapps. Any questions for Commissioner Jones' report?
I'd just like to say, Mr. Chairman, I have a bottle of schnapps that is unopened. If you would like to auction it for my benefit, I would really appreciate it. Thank you again.
Good cause. Any other comments or questions? If not, looks like I'm up next. It's been all things Southwest Counseling and District Board of Health for me over the last couple of weeks. On Wednesday, the twenty first, Commissioner Richards and I met with county staff and Southwest Counseling's Board Chair and staff members to discuss the impact assistance funding relative to Project West. As he pointed out, we visited one of their facilities that houses their subacute crisis and social detox beds to learn more about the additional impacts these services will face in response to the influx of population over the two-year construction period of Project West. We then discussed the best approach forward. Presenting our case to the Industrial Siding Council, which Commissioner Richards covered very well. So in an effort not to be repetitive there, I'll. Just say that I appreciate Commissioner, Commissioner Richards' effort and willingness to kind of grab the bull by the horns on this industrial siding process. It's. One that's very time consuming, as you heard, and very involved. And I know him and staff, as well as Commissioner Slaughter have. Been diligent and spending all day working on, you know, different meetings over the past weeks trying to. Sort through the different applications from the agencies that may be impacted. So thanks to all that's involved with that. I know that's not a small feat. Southwest Counseling has recently created committee assignments within their Board of Directors and one of those is a finance committee. So on Thursday, the twenty second, I was invited to attend one of their. Finance Committee Meetings regarding two R F Ps that their organization intended to apply for. Through Wyoming Department of Health under the Crisis Services Continuum of Care Program. First R F P was for funding assistance for their Crisis Intervention Services Program in the amount of a hundred and thirty-three thousand. The second was for four hundred and seventy-five thousand to fund four subacute crisis residential beds. The subacute residential program has been one of the crisis areas we've identified as a top priority, which also aligns with the tier one population as far as the state's definition. So it'll be interesting to see the outcome of these awards. The subacute social detox. Excuse me, the subacute and the social detox aspects of mental health. Are some of those gaps that we've been discussing and identifying within the community. So hopefully we can begin to focus in on these crisis areas. Morning of the twenty eighth was my monthly District Board of Health Meeting. Their board has asked for some. Or they did ask for some training at their last monthly meeting. In regards to budgets and financials and trying to better understand how to dissect financial statements. Treasurer Cowan, as you know, also serves as their board treasurer. And he assisted with this and provided some education on their profit and loss statement, which I think was very beneficial. I do remain with some continued concerns there as I have been cautioning the board and staff for. The last couple of years now, that year over year, they're relying on reserves to balance their budget. And no one seems to be asking the question as to why that is. You know, eventually, as you all know, those reserves will run out. And especially as we keep asking for the reduction in days cash on hand down to a hundred and twenty days, specifically last year in this. Once, once that happens and once that reserve account is diminished, then the really difficult decisions will need to be made. And so. You know, I encourage them to get ahead of that and try and figure out, you know, how they can better balance their budget. You know, we, I just can't express enough the importance behind fiscal responsibility and we appoint people to these boards to help lighten the load. That we have up here and to help us push out the different goals and programs that are intended to have a positive impact, you know, within the community. And that doesn't much matter if you can't balance a budget. And so. I do have concerns. Fortunately, we're head, head enough in the game where I think we can get that turned around, but in a year from now, if we don't. I think it's gonna be very difficult. So. I'll continue to work with them, but I hope their board, you know, jumps in a little more proactively to. You know, do the work rather than having me try and tell them how to budget and then approve their budget. So it's been kind of. A learning curve for them, but a lot of this, I don't mean that as a negative on their board, but stemmed from. The board training that has been required. They're asking more questions, they're getting more involved and they're wanting to. Be a better board member. And so I again point back to that requirement the legislature pushed out and the importance behind that because. You know, as you can see, things can get out of hand in a quick hurry. And if you don't have a good director that's in charge of. You know, making sure that, you know, the Ts are crossed and the Is are dotted, then. Pretty soon it ends up back in our lap and then we really have to make the tough decisions. So. We'll keep working on that. The evening of the twenty eighth was my monthly Southwest Counseling Mental Health Board Meeting. Has kicked off their first meeting at the H H S Building, which they passed by resolution at their last meeting to change their meeting location to. Primarily speaking, aside from the R F Ps I just mentioned, there was a lot of discussion on the behavior health redesign. And the complex funding requirements that will soon be implemented with that on July first. I gave you all a pretty complex update a couple of months ago that I too have since forgotten. So. Don't ask for any updates there, but one of the new changes is in regards to Medicaid and. There's a lot to it. So. Hopefully I've comprehended it correctly, but from what I understand, in order to get paid through the state's tiered program and so. In the past, I've told you about the tier one, two and three classifications. One of the requirements is that all individuals must have Medicaid and a Medicaid number. So in order to enroll and apply for the Medicaid program, each individual must have an email address. So there is a lot of concern. From staff and their board that the logistics and getting all of this necessary information in a timely manner as these services are being provided. And not everyone has an email and will that email then get shared with Southwest Counseling so that they can. Apply to the state for reimbursement and, you know, you get it from there. But. They're working through some of those kinks. Private insurance does not cover case management services typically speaking. Which is evidently the push for Medicaid. The additional problem with Medicaid is that they pay what they want, as we see in other various services offered throughout the county. And staff has shared that if the billed amount that they have for services is a hundred and forty dollars an hour, the Medicaid reimbursement is about eighty-eight dollars an hour. So there's gonna be a big loss with that. The question I had was what happens to the individuals who get denied when they apply for Medicaid? It sounds like the state then picks up the tab. So the state pays either way. It's just a different funding level from a different funding source. So hopefully that makes as little sense to you as it does to me, but. For the first year, the additional costs or the overruns are those unpaid will be backfilled. As some of these kinks are worked out. So it'll be an interesting first year, but that's one small piece of. The complexity and the. Mental health redesign program. The morning of the twenty ninth, I attended another finance committee meeting for Southwest Counseling. This one was for an additional R F A, they called it, that they submitted to the state for about twenty-five thousand. Towards a marketing and media campaign, which is intended to provide public awareness in Sweetwater County by educating residents on mental health issues. Inform them of the behavioral health redesign and to promote Southwest Counseling as the Community Mental Health and Substance Disorder Center. Should they be awarded any of the three opportunities I've spoken to, they will be coming before us for official acceptance. I still feel like this is a little bit backwards in the process. And they should probably get our blessing first since we approved their programs. But as we work through some of that, I will give them credit for going after additional funding mechanisms to help expand services that they do offer, especially those. I've mentioned that identify the gaps and the need for more prioritized focus. I do appreciate their board and staff keeping me in the loop during these discussions. It's a busy organization with lots of moving parts and plenty of meetings if you're available to attend them. So they're keeping me busy. Yesterday, Treasurer Cowan and I had a teams meeting with Kim Leinberger, the Director of Board of Health, as well as their Board Chair Kathy Coomer. To have additional discussions on the district's budget and finances. There's a little confusion there and I don't know where some of this is coming from, but we're gonna continue to work through that, Treasurer Cowan. Kim have another meeting today, but we spent about an hour and a half going through. You know, the gap in their budget and then at the end of it all, found out that the numbers we had were inaccurate. So it was a little bit of a wasted time effort there, but. Important thing is there is concern being displayed from that board and they're trying to crack down on, you know, closing the gap between their expenditures and their, their revenues. So. They have set up a special meeting for next Monday. To get with their board on a couple of other matters, but particularly. In trying to finalize their budgets. And if you remember from last meeting. Last year, we went after the cities for some support for funding mechanisms because they do appoint members to that board. The question was, you know, what does that look like as far as the funding requests from the cities? Because the statute is not specific on that front. And so. Part of what they're wrestling with is trying to figure out how to reduce our share while also increasing the city's share and making sure there's some form of a guarantee as they wrestle with. You know, getting their, their budget balanced. So. I do have a meeting with both mayors tomorrow. We'll try and. Kind of broach the topic with them on that, but. Lots of budget discussions and that's, I guess, good preparation for us in the coming months. Next couple of weeks are pretty light for the most part. Do have a couple of meetings. With the W C C A and there is a meeting with Terra Power, a luncheon that's coming up on the twenty first. Aside from that, it seems like there's always plenty that comes up. On its own, so I'll look forward to those. I did want to mention that we have sent out a public service announcement, announcement. For the Commissioner's Scholarship this year, and I wanted to thank the local media outlets for jumping on that. Last year, we had a hard time kind of getting that word out and we didn't have any applications. Pretty much up until the deadline. So. Each of them that we sent it to pushed that P S A out and got it advertised. So hopefully for those that. Keep an eye on that. Please know that the deadline to apply for those is April twenty third. And there are three one thousand dollar scholarships available. So thanks to Sally for preparing that and helping us get it out. That pretty well wraps up my last couple of weeks, Commissioners. Pause for any questions. If not, Commissioner Slaughter, you're up next.
Mr. Chairman, it seems to me that it must have been three weeks since our last meeting and listening to the reports and then seeing what I am preparing. Or I have prepared for you today. We may not have time for Mary at the end of the day. So. On, on the twentieth, I met with Public Works Director Legursky to discuss upcoming issues on Crossroads Park and the soccer fields. We also discussed capital for the twenty twenty-five fiscal year budget and building reserves for future projects. Gene also shared an interesting report on quarterly construction cost insights with me. On the twenty first, I participated in an industrial siding meeting with Casa Rock Hospital District, which was previously referred to by Commissioner Richards. I won't. Add anything further on it, other than I, I think. That Eric Bingham and Chris Tolson did a great job describing the project and helping Bailey understand the basics of filing for impact assistance. Later that day, I conducted a discussion with interested parties on crossroad parks usage for soccer teams this year. Gene Legursky presented a proposal that would have required reservations to be used to control access and guarantee that everyone has equal access to the fields. After discussion with the Avengers Soccer Team Representatives Dustin Moses and Preston Cross. It was determined that we would postpone use of the reservation system and that Gene would prepare an M O U that would address the issues under contention. Gene had prepared that M O U and that is the item today. Commissioners, that we have pulled from the agenda subsequent to sending that M O U out. The Avengers have asked for us to delete a couple of items in, in the M O U. And we feel like it's something that is critical. So we have asked for another meeting with them to discuss that and we will be bringing that M O U at a further date. On the twenty second, I traveled to Lyman to participate in the monthly C L G meeting. I was pleasantly surprised to find U S Congressman, Congresswoman Harriet Hegeman present at the meeting when I walked in. The Congresswoman discussed many issues of local and federal concern for the first hour and fifteen minutes of the meeting. During her discussion, we covered many of the topics generally covered during the regular C L G meeting. After hearing the Congresswoman's comments, we heard from Rowdy Muir on the Ashley National Forest Plan. Rowdy is very pleased with the plan and particular the areas that were addressed during the comment period. Danielle Bettencourt then reviewed all of the items that are currently of concern. That evening, Marielle and I attended Congresswoman Hegeman's Town Hall in Rock Springs. It was extremely well attended and the Congresswoman informed the public on many of the same issues we had heard about earlier in the day. I was very impressed and believe that she is doing a great job for the state of Wyoming. On the twenty sixth, I met with Ryan Rust of the City of Green River to help him better understand some of the complexities of the specific purpose tax joint powers board indenture. We discussed several of the items that are spelled out in the indenture. I supplied him with a copy of it and offered my assistance with any future questions. Industrial Siding Group then met later that day to help guide Fire District Number One Fire Chief, Chief Kitchener. Through the application process for impact assistance funds on Project West. Once again, I think it was very helpful to guide another of our agencies in this process. On the twenty seventh, I once again met with Public Works Director Legursky. There are many things going on in his world. We discussed many of them. In addition, I brought forth issues that had been sent to me by Golden Hour Senior Center Director Marcia Driggs. This included a new potential lighting project and other safety issues at the center. Afterwards, the Industrial Siding Group had another follow-up with Southwest Counseling Service. I sat in for Chairman West. And once again felt that these meetings were being productive and helping entities prepare information for the application for impact assistance funding. Immediately upon ending the meeting with Southwest Counseling, we met with Granger Mayor, Mayor Valerio. To introduce the information to him to help Granger with their potential application. Late that afternoon, I attended the Golden Hour Senior Center Monthly Board Meeting. They are continuing to delay the investment of their reserve funds. Their Treasurer John Freeman had a conversation with Treasurer Cowan earlier in that day. I once again informed them of the B O C C discussion on limiting entities to a hundred and twenty days cash on hand. They are aware of our position. They have a new office manager starting on March eleventh. They would also like to amend their salary schedule. I volunteered our H R department to provide assistance. We then talked about their safety concerns and lighting project and I referred them back to Gene. That evening, Marielle and I attended the Sweetwater County Events Complex Regular Board Meeting. Commissioner Richards had informed me that they were going to be reviewing. The initial plans for their new strategic management plan. It was very interesting to see the concepts that have been proposed to update their facilities and grounds. Look forward to what they are going to bring forward in the future. On the second, I participated in the Sweetwater County Republican Party Convention. That was very interesting. We spent the day. Working on the platform and resolutions for the party. That was very interesting. On the fourth, I once again met with the Impact. On the fourth, I once again met with the Impact Assistance Group to review and amend impact assistance application requests. We made several suggested changes for the applications. We will continue this process with Memorial Hospital tomorrow morning, which was this morning and which we did. I spent the afternoon preparing for this meeting, reviewing email and other correspondence and filing many of the items that have been collected on my desk. Commissioner Richards and I then met with Assessor Davis to review his presentation for this meeting. This morning, I once again met with the Industrial Siding Group to help Memorial Hospital amend their application for impact assistance funds from the Industrial Siding Council. I too would like to congratulate Coach of the Year Art Castillo and his WWCC Wrestling Team on their second consecutive national championship. And in addition, I would like to congratulate Green River wrestler Kale Kenezovich for becoming the first Wolves four-time state champion, which if you're familiar with Green River's wrestling program, it's remarkable that that's the first time we've had a four-time state champion. And that's a tremendous accomplishment. It's also of note that Kale, Kale's mom works in our county clerk's office. So kudos to you, Chantel, on raising such a fine young man and a great wrestler. With that, Mr. Chairman, I will move to our report from Mr. Legursky. On buildings, he states, "We have reviewed the bid plans for the Rock Springs Youth Home and we are gathering prices from subcontractors. This project is a bathroom remodel and adding a couple of doors so we can handle most of the project ourselves." Lindsay Travis, Library Director, and I met with Plan One last week to go over their scope for the ARPA SLIB Library Upgrade Project. The most important thing in this meeting was for everyone to understand that the grant has a hard start day and a hard end day. We stressed to Plan One that their schedule would dictate the hard start day, so it was important for them to stay on schedule. They should be getting a scope contract and schedule to us later this week. Southwest Counseling and I have met several times over the past two weeks to tour various facilities. This is in preparation for the ARPA SLIB Boards Award of two point seven million dollars for the regional stabilization of women's substance abuse disorder facilities to Southwest Counseling. We will be reviewing Plan One schematic drawing later this month and continue working with Southwest staff to help minimize impacts to their facilities and keep things going in an orderly fashion. We finally figured out the cause of the sewer problems at the Green River Courthouse. One of the main stack lines in the basement is old enough that the deterioration in the pipe is causing us problems. We are waiting on a price to slip line the old lines to alleviate this problem. The project will be discussed further with the BOCC during the March nineteenth, twenty twenty-four meeting. Southwest Counseling Duran Facility and Rock Springs Youth Home are undergoing some minor remediation by Blue Sky, formerly ARS, for minor water issues. Later this week, we'll also camera and clean the main line from the Rock Springs Youth Home to the city connection to check the line for debris, roots, and other problems that are causing slow drainage within this building. I met with a mechanical engineering firm that will help us design the rooftop unit and air handling unit upgrade at the detention facility. This project is part of our capital request for this year. The project is needed to replace aging units and upgrade various louver and balancing configurations for airflow within the facility. The maintenance crew handled seventy-three work order requests in January. For Road and Bridge, the lime-coated aggregate hall project from YODOT, the Bitter Creek Interchange to our Lagoon Yard is almost complete. Due to strange weather that we've been having this winter, we're having to continue to pick soft pots in County Road Number Twenty-three North Wamsetter Crooks Gap and County Road Number Twenty Lumen Road and others because of the lack of frost in the subgrade. This is causing the truck traffic to degrade the road because of the frozen subgrade in the morning and partially unfrozen subgrade in the afternoon. This typically happens for a month in mid-spring. However, we have been battling this issue for almost a month currently with no end in sight. Final project specifications for the twenty-twenty congestion mitigation and air quality project are at the YODOT Main Office waiting final approval. Staff is also working on a chip seal project for a majority of the Trona Mine Roads that will be bid later in the spring for summer completion. Staff also prepared an impact assistance letter for Director, Director Eric Bingham for the Project West Industrial Siding Council Meeting. This assessment was the first one of its type and laid excellent groundwork for assessments on future projects and will also help the Sheriff's Department assess impacts for overweight oversized loads. And finally, with Parks and Recreation, staff met with representatives from the National High School Finals Rodeo Committee last week to go over plans and activities for the trap competition that they have during the week of the rodeo. This is a great event and our facility is always well received by the contestants. Staff continues to make preparations for the spring in all of our parks. We will be topping off the baseball softball fields with fresh dirt at Crossroads and Reliance Parks later this spring. The infield mix is hauled in from Colorado and is a special blend of material to allow for the groomed infields and better water absorption. With that, Mr. Chairman, I would stand for any questions.
Thanks, Commissioner. Great report. Questions for Commissioner Slaughter, Commissioners? It's like you're getting off easy.
Yeah.
Job well done in a busy couple of weeks. Commissioner Toman.
Well, congratulations and thank you to my fellow Commissioners. Wow, you said the workload, you thought it was going to slow down? I'm in my fourth year and I think it's quadruple, maybe it's ten times as much work because you've all stepped up to the plate to meet the demands. So thank you very much. Makes my report easy. I feel like I haven't been doing anything. On, okay, on February twenty-second, I did attend the Coalition of Local Governments and as Commissioner Slaughter said, we had a rousing meeting with Representative Hegeman. And then we covered our monthly items dealing with all federal actions that occurring in Sweetwater County and Southwest Wyoming. Jason Gay, the High Desert District Manager for the BLM has moved on to private practice. Aaron Meyer, the Field Manager in Kimber, has retired. So the High Desert District offices are Kimberly Foster is still the full-time Field Manager in Rock Springs, but the rest are operating under temporary Field Managers, Kimber, Pinedale, Rawlins. So hopefully they get those leadership positions filled. On the twenty-third, I attended the three sixty-eight Energy Corridors Cooperative Meeting. That is a multi-state process. The next meeting with cooperators will be on March twelfth at nine AM. It's a half hour Zoom for this sector. So I see Eric Bingham over there. I leave it up to him to take, do the hard work of getting the maps and everything going. On February twenty-eighth, I did a Zoom meeting with the Southwest Manufacturing Partnership, the Innovation and Education meeting with Ryan Bledsoe, Ron Wild, Melissa Atkinson. They're working to develop a flyer to send out to the Southwest Manufacturing Employers soliciting opportunities for Green River High School students to have short-term, maybe a quarter, like internship opportunities. Our, our youth are not having as many opportunities to see what the workforce is about before they graduate. So that is the major focus right there, right now. On the twenty-ninth, I attended another Zoom meeting, the US Geological Survey had a sage, a sagebrush modeling Zoom meeting, talking about all the different models, how they might use them to be able to more effectively determine areas where different types of enhancement for the habitat might work better or not work as well. So that was very interesting. On March first, I met with Devon Brew Baker at Southwest Regional Airport to preview the airport twenty-year master plan because I had to miss the one with the Commissioners earlier. I would recommend that the public go to RKSMasterPlan.com. This airport and Devon, what he has done up there is one of the leaders in, I would say, the whole Mountain West area or maybe more for what he's trying to do at that airport. But I have to say, do a ding to the Green River Star. I didn't appreciate their February nineteenth cartoon that had the airport going topsy-turvy saying it doesn't seem to be flying right. That, that was very disappointing, so I hope you guys can fix that. Because they've had an issue with a contractor causing the terminal not to be finished on time, I don't think that should be a representation of the entire airport because there are so many things happening up there. And it's so important to our area. I also discussed with him, we, we've talked about the shortage of pilots and I was excited to hear that Devon is reaching out. They have started aviation class at Rock Springs High School and at Green River High School. Devon will be presenting on the, I believe it's the twenty-first to their wind program. It's an hour of flex hour that students can come in and hear about different topics. So I will go with Devon to talk about pilot, being a pilot. On, let's see. March first, I attended the Federal Partners Meeting with Commissioner Richards. And today I will reach out to that group to see. We have an annual federal, federal agency update to the Commissioners, usually in April. Either April second or April sixteenth. And Kimberly did point out that this is one of our requirements with the BLM is the MOU requires that they do an annual report to the Commissioners. So we do it during that meeting. So I just wanted to make the Commissioners aware of that. Yesterday, I stopped by Cisskiny National Wildlife Refuge to bid farewell to manager, the manager there for twelve years has been Tim Kerner. He has done an outstanding job of, of trying to do some really great things at that refuge. He's going to be sorely missed and he's also, he was also the manager for several refuges. I believe seven total, Cokeville and some in Colorado, as well as those in Eastern Wyoming. Okay, at our Federal Partners Meeting, Brian Wilson, the Ranger from the Manila Office of the Ashley National Forest provided updates. They're excited to get into their new office space in the Golden Hour Senior Center Building. So thanks to Gene and, and Rob Slaughter for helping make that happen. The Ashley National Forest Plan is final now, so they're going to hold open houses to inform the public. And those will be in Green River and Manila in the near future. So watch for those to come and learn about what they have done with that plan. The Flaming Gorge National Recreation Area Draft Plan will be out to the cooperators for review in mid-March and that's coming fast. And over the snow travel management plan must be completed within three years. So, Mr. Over the Snow over there, you might want to plug into that part of the plan. The Ranger talked about Executive Order one four oh seven-two old growth forest mandates. We'll have a draft EIS out in May for ninety-day comment period, but it should not have a major impact on the nationally as their plan, they felt, had incorporated most of those requirements going forward. Commissioner Richard inquired about the possibility of a state park in the Flaming Gorge National Recreation Area. Sound like they rounded up the chain but had no, had not received anything back from headquarters. The Bureau of Land Management, there are so many things happening there. The Pacific Soda EIS draft is out. The Project West will be on private ground, but so it's non-BLM, but they must have BLM for roads and pipeline corridors. So on March eleventh, they will have a notice of intent and a cooperative meeting. Jackalope Wind Notice of Intent is out mid-March for public scoping. And the Rock Springs Research Management Plan received over thirty-five thousand comments. They narrowed it down to forty-five hundred substantive comments. They have a bid out for contract support to help analyze those comments. The final RMP is projected to be out late this summer and the Record of Decision by fall, as we have been told, they want to get that out before the election. So I don't know how they're going to get it done, but they think they can. There are filed four wild horse lawsuits out there for the gathers or against the gathers or whatever. Saturday, I attended the Green River Valley Cattlemen's Meetings and annual awards. I won't go into all of the, because we didn't, we didn't raise thirty thousand, so I won't talk about any. Maybe I should give them that idea, though. The snob auction. Project West on the twentieth of March is having a virtual meeting and they hope to have that plan through the BLM process anyway by the end of June. Coalition meeting meets on the twenty-first of March. And I also wanted to attend the Terra Power meeting that Kayla and SEDC is sponsoring on the twenty-first also. So that concludes my plan and thanks to all the hard work of my fellow Commissioners. Thank you.
Thanks, Commissioner. Good report as well. Any comments or questions for Commissioner Toman? Well, job well done, Commissioners. That's some busy reports and busy couple of weeks as always. Keep up the good work. And with that, we have fallen behind a little bit, but we'll see if we can make up some headway here.
It's not my fault.
No, it is not. This is going to move us right along into Tab C today, which is the action presentation items. First up, we have an invitation to attend the Crisis Intervention Team statewide conference. And with us this morning is Officer Lars Nandrop. And good morning, Officer.
I am here to invite you guys all to attend a great opportunity for Sweetwater County's voice to be heard. Law enforcement in this county far too often end up responding to people having a mental crisis. CIT or Crisis Intervention Team Training is a specialized police curriculum that aims to reduce the risk of serious injury or death during an emergency interaction between persons with mental illness and police officers. Crisis Intervention or CIT has been implemented both nationally and internationally to great success. Thankfully, most of our officers and deputies within this county have received this training. This county's officers respond to anything from suicidal subjects to mentally disabled people running naked through talkative time, throwing food around, only to see the individuals enter a revolving door or being taken to the hospital, being released to later have another mental crisis where law enforcement once again gets involved. A successful CIT program is more than just training officer on how to talk to people and how to effectively de-escalate people. A successful CIT program diverts people with mental illness away from our jails and focuses on getting the individuals the help they need. Long-term solutions rather than short-term. In Wyoming, we have a suicide on average every sixty hours. However, Sweetwater County lacks the facilities and mental health care needs for our residents. As you probably may have learned from visiting with Southwest Counseling over the last period here. There's currently a strong push from our governor and some of the state legislator to change the lack of resources in our response to people in mental crisis. I believe we have a current opportunity to get the help from the state and possibly some federal funds to improve our mental health support network. This opportunity will take place when Governor Gordon, along with the Department of Health and the Wyoming Associations of Sheriff's Chiefs of Police and Chiefs of Police are hosting a two-day conference in Casper, which is taking place April third and fourth. I don't know if you guys all got the email or, okay. Governor Gordon, Chief Justice Fox, and several other individuals with expertise in the area of CIT will be guest speakers. And I've been told there will be a chance for roundtable discussions so different counties within the state can learn from each other and find better solutions. I therefore strongly encourage representatives from both our county government and municipalities to attend this conference to help us all get on the same page and gather the resources needed for our county so that we can have a successful crisis intervention program. A program that does not stop with a law enforcement response, but also includes a long-term solution. While I've been here, sitting here since nine o'clock, the other two officers that are on duty right now in Green River, both men tied up dealing with people within a mental crisis. And while neither one of them are looking at a jail situation or even being transported to the hospital, it ties up resources constantly. And I'm sure Mr. DeLeon can attest to how much his office also handles cases that gets forwarded to his office and his colleagues. I know I've had numerous conversations with him on the phone both day and night where we're trying to avert or divert somebody and get them the help they need. And hopefully with some training and some push from the government, we can come up with a solution that is better than the one we currently have and we can get the people the help they need. And I hope that some of you or all of you can attend this conference and maybe we can show, Sweetwater County show up with a voice in the force. I've spoken with Mayor Rust as well and he hopes to have either somebody from his either himself or somebody else within the city to also attend and maybe we can make a representation from Sweetwater County and show that we truly care about this and get the resources we need.
Well, thanks, Officer Nandrop. Appreciate you coming over and providing this information to us. It is something we're aware of and we're trying to, to address because it does seem like there's a gap there. I mean, I kind of spoke to it earlier, but from a police officer perspective, you don't have eight hours to sit there and try and figure out where, how to get those to the individual resources. And so that's a gap that we're trying to fix and we're going to need your help to make that happen. So if it's educational, such as this conference or whatever that might be, I think you have our full support and we'll continue to work on that. So. whatever that might be, I think you have our full support and we'll continue to work on that. So I appreciate all you do and thanks for coming over this morning.
Thank you very much.
Questions or comments commissioners? Keep up the good work.
Well, thank you very much. Appreciate it.
That was a long morning for you to sit through with all that. Probably a little mental health check for yourself. Uh, moving right along, we've got item C2 under the action and presentation items, which is the introduction to the new University Wyoming Extension Educator for Sweetwater County. I believe we've got Darryl Roethlisberger with us today. And good morning. Difficult for you to sit through too.
It's okay.
Uh, welcome.
Thank you very much. I'd like to introduce myself and, uh, thank Commissioner Tolman for being in on my, my interview process and, uh, and I'm happy to be here with the University of Wyoming and being here in Sweetwater County. Uh, I come to Sweetwater County, uh, kind of a lifelong resident via my wife. Was born and raised in McKinnon and showed at the county fair and, um, she's taught ag, uh, several locations, uh, uh, in the FFA program. And I've, my career has been obviously with 4H about 25 years up to this point. We have six children. Um, and, uh, my youngest is at Casper College on livestock judging scholarship. So, uh, we're enjoying Wyoming and we've been in McKinnon about three years. Um, I wanted to bring you up to date a little bit, uh, with some of the things that's been going on in my short tenure of just three weeks here with, uh, Sweetwater County Extension. Uh, I've attended about four or five 4H club meetings, uh, where I'm getting to know the club leaders. Uh, we have about 50 volunteer leaders and about 350, uh, or so 4H members that are enrolled in 4H. We've been working on the Fair Book, uh, getting things updated and, uh, introducing, reintroducing, I should say, some new, uh, items. And then we're going to have a round robin showmanship contest as well as, uh, a judging clinic that will be presented at the fair in addition to some judging clinics, uh, uh, prior to in the summer. Uh, we're going to bring back superintendents at the fair, uh, to help manage and coordinate, facilitate, uh, the exhibitors there from livestock to static exhibits and all points in between. We have various clinics planned, uh, at this point for, um, the 4H members, uh, some selection, uh, workshops for kids showing pigs and lambs. Uh, and then we're going to, uh, follow that up with some showmanship clinics, uh, in the summer. Um, I have to give kudos to my office assistant Tracy Meats. Uh, she's been fantastic and keeping things afloat in the 4H world, uh, while, um, the process of, uh, of bringing on a new educator. Um, she tells me there's some interest in some after-school programming, uh, from some teachers. And so we're going to be looking into that. Uh, there's some possible grant funding available for some of those, uh, teachers to utilize, uh, 4H curriculum and after-school program. Uh, finally, one of the things that we're going to, uh, do something new here is to, um, implement, uh, county 4H teen leaders, uh, which will be, uh, leadership opportunity and training for those senior age kids, which is age 14 to 18 in the 4H program, uh, from a countywide perspective to provide them some leadership opportunities. One of which would be, for example, our regional 4H camp, um, that we'll have in June and they'll be involved in facilitating that event as well as some officer training, teaching parliamentary procedure to, uh, youth club officers throughout the county. And, um, just not only getting some leadership opportunities for themselves, but offering and providing that service back to some of the 4H clubs, uh, in the community. So that's kind of a, a quick rundown of what's been going on in the last three weeks in my world. Uh, thank you very much for allowing me to come and meet you and introduce myself. And I look forward to a robust, uh, partnership with the county commissioner and University of Wyoming, and specifically with Sweetwater County. So I do have, uh, a little swag for you. I brought you some t-shirts. I'll let Mary distribute those.
Always good to butter us up. Now, congratulations.
Thank you so much.
Sounds like you're more than familiar with the areas. So that, that helps.
It does help.
A little personal touch.
Very much. So.
Questions or comments commissioners?
We're excited. Thank you. He brings a wealth of experience to him. And I think that we're going to see our 4H program really boom.
Thank you so much. Appreciate your time.
Good luck to you. I know you're just getting your feet wet, but we'll look forward to the changes and progress forward. Thanks for coming over this morning. Next under tab C is item number three. We've got the Sweetwater Events Complex 2023 Year-End Review. With us this morning is Candy Pendleton, Sweetwater County Events Complex Director. And I believe Board Chair Mr. Spicer has joined us as well. Morning to you both.
Good morning. You, um, you all have been busy and I appreciate the, the updates that you give. It was, um, it's nice to hear what y'all do in your part-time job. So, um, well done everybody. I can't imagine what kind of hours you're putting in and, um, obviously we're lucky to have you and we appreciate that. So I will try to not take the 20 minutes so I can get you caught up on your schedule this morning, but I do have some great information to share. So, um, I do a, a calendar year review just because it seems impossible to try to do this in July when we end the fiscal year with everything else going on. So calendar year wise, I'm going to give you an update on what we saw in 2023. I have been working pretty diligently to get our staff and our board and, and the community to understand our vision and our mission and some other things on here. So we always start our meetings with this. Um, I quizzed our, our maintenance staff on this the other day and, um, one of them cheated, but it worked. So, um, our mission is to provide a quality year-round recreational facilities and services which enhance the quality of life and economic impact, sorry, economic opportunities for the residents, businesses and visitors of Sweetwater County. And our vision is to ensure a vibrant, well-maintained facility that offers space for social interaction, embracing change, celebrating people and enjoying life. And we have six guiding principles that we always try to work towards, um, public benefit. We understand that we're publicly funded, um, partially public funded at least. And so we want to be a benefit to the public. We strive, huge strives to, to make sure that the facility is in great shape. Um, we work on supporting local in several different ways. Uh, we celebrate what we have here in Sweetwater County. And we invite people from all over the nation to come and see us. And, and we're really proud of what we have in Sweetwater County. And we want people to know why we live here and what we enjoy. Uh, very important for us when you come on the grounds that you have a great experience. You know, most people don't come with the idea that they're coming to, um, an event that's hosted by somebody else, right? When they come on the grounds, they assume that it's, that it's us, no matter what happens. So, so we do our best to make sure that you have a positive experience when you're on the grounds. And we're striving to be, um, sustainability, to strive to be an economic engine for Sweetwater County. Here are our fair board members, which you have all appointed, but we put some pictures on there. Um, I stole those pictures from Facebook because we don't spend money on professional photos. So here you go. Um, our chairman is Bob Spicer. Rob Zadi is our vice chair. He's also on the Green River City Council. Janet Hartford is our secretary and treasurer. She is from Green River. Coral Hewler from Rock Springs. Mark Lyon is the newest member. He's been on the board for a couple of months now. Tommy Toman and Roger Torgerson. We have a great fair board. They're very active. Um, they certainly have the best interests at heart.
Candy, I might tell you that Tommy Toman had a second, they have a second new baby boy.
Oh, they do.
On Saturday.
Very nice.
Emmett Paul. Uh, his wife is Liz, uh, Toman, the FFA teacher in Green River. So shout out to them. It was almost on Tommy's birthday, the 28th.
Very nice. Congratulations. I knew they were getting close. Very good. Um, picture here is of our staff. Um, I tell you guys every time I come and I, I say it at all of our meetings that, um, they're just fantastic. It's a fantastic group of people. So again, no professional photos. You see that we all are wearing our Christmas headbands or at least the girls are wearing the Christmas headbands. But, um, this is the entire staff that, that does the workout, the events complex, both from a maintenance and an event standpoint to the construction work. They're just, they're just the best. They really are. They're fantastic.
You must have someone that professionally poses them.
You know what? The, the guys think they're very clever. So, um, the, the maintenance guys think they're funny. So they, they enjoyed that. Yeah. So our 2023 economic impact this year was just short of 18 and a half million dollars. Um, this number is actually different than the number that was reported when Commissioner Slaughter and Richards were there um, last week because I did get the horse racing numbers. So horse racing went up, which we expected, and I'll share that with you in the next slide. But almost 18 and a half million dollars in economic impact, up 15% from last year. So a significant improvement. Um, most of this is direct visitor spending. So just not include the multipliers that are typically used in economic impact numbers. Um, most of those are direct visitor spending and I'll, I'll go into that a little bit more. But really proud of that number and we certainly hope to see that grow. Um, I know we will see a huge impact for the next two years with national high school here. That number will skyrocket and, and that's going to be really good for Sweetwater County. So here's how those numbers break down. Um, our just regular annual events, um, bring in about half of that money, not quite half, honestly. Um, so our regular yearly events bring in about $9 million in economic impact. And then our summer season, the three or four months that we have when it's nice and warm, brings in the other 50 plus percent of the monies that come in. So we bring in just over a million dollars just for the regular overnight stays. People that stop in the campground without coming for an event. They're just coming through Sweetwater County and they want to stop and spend the night. Horse racing number is up to 2.4 million dollars. 2406709 is the number that was returned for historic horse racing. Half of that amount goes directly to Sweetwater County. The other half is split between Rock Springs and Green River based on their historic horse racing revenues. Um, I can tell you the horse racing.
Is that your share after you, the split, the 2.4 million?
Mm-hmm. Okay. Yep. 2.4 million. And that's the new number. Um, the state has not approved the payments yet, but we should be seeing that soon. So the county will get 670,000 here in the next couple of weeks for the last half of 2023. And Green River and Rock Springs will get those same shares. Wyoming's big show obviously has a great impact for us. Um, we, we really love that event. I think the community loves it. Um, we see that grow year after year. So about 19.7%, about 20%. And then the Airstream Rally was huge for us last year. So Airstream Rally at South brought in 12% of that economic impact. And we've seen that the last couple of years, we've shared that with you. And I think you've seen in the community, those RV rallies are, are a big impact. Those people come, they spend some time at the, at the grounds themselves, doing their seminars and fun things. But then they always stick around because they want to see what we have to offer. Obviously, when those people are here, they're spending money at all the different locations, right? Restaurants, hotels, bars, um, animal care, groomers, um, they get massages. They're, they're just all over, which is great. So ROI on the money that we get from the county on our regular mill levy allocation, um, we received 1.9 million last year. Economic impact of a little bit short of 18 and a half. So for every dollar that we get, we return $9.36 to the county. And again, that number continues to go up and we're proud of that. So here are some fun numbers, um, just to break things down for you. So in 2023, we had 15,366 overnight campers in the grounds. That includes people that stopped overnight. That includes the fair, that includes Airstream, horse racing. Um, everything that happens on the grounds. We had 15,366 nights of campers in there. Based on Wyoming travel and tourism numbers, people typically spend $215 on a nightly stay. So if you multiply that out, just the campground brought in 3.3 million dollars in revenue to Sweetwater County. 1,313 rental days. Um, you guys know, we often have six or seven things happening at once on the grounds, right? We could have a motocross race and a stock car race and something happening at the indoor arena and meetings and exhibit hall space. So that's where that 1313 comes from. And then the breakdown of those numbers, 684 dates of banquets, um, celebrations, weddings, trade shows, meetings, 419 equestrian and livestock events. So the indoor arena remains busy throughout the year. Uh, community service days are the days that are donated. Um, 4H events don't pay for the facility use. Emergency training don't pay for facility use. We try to partner with any of the other government groups when they have trainings, the airports, the SEDC, any of those things. So 137 community service days and 73 wield sports dates. And we could have more wield sports, um, if we had a longer summer, but those are tricky. We also, um, were able to get a report from Placer AI this year on the numbers of visitors to the county, to the events complex. And we, we have not seen that in the past, but we have just short of 360,000 visits to the events complex. They geofenced our property, um, 82,900 unique visitors to the Sweetwater Events Complex in 2023. So that was pretty incredible. And the increases year over year is something that, um, we hope we can continue to see that trend in the right direction. But you can see the end of the COVID year right there, um, was pretty dismal for us. And then the increase the last couple of years has been nice. So the geofencing works, um, you guys are all familiar with it, but obviously they can geofence just the property. Um, we did ask the question, you know, how they keep Yellowstone Road from being included? Cause that would obviously inflate your number. So you have to be on the grounds for a minimum of seven minutes in order to be counted in that number and you're only counted once. So really, really interesting. Almost alarming what kind of information they can give you about, you know, where you've been and what you do. So they also shared with us, you know, where people go before they come to the events complex, where they go after, like during fair, where do they leave and go to? It's breakfast, by the way, ponchos.
It's very disturbing.
It is. It's super disturbing. It is. Uh, the other interesting thing that, um, and this was a number higher than we expected, but a great number to hear. We had 94,200 visitors onsite during the week of fair. So from the Saturday when we start doing fair setup to the Sunday when people move out, we had 94,000 people on the grounds. So really cool information. Um, Sweetwater County Travel and Tourism has contracted with a company that does the geofencing. We're going to try to work with them to start getting some numbers about specific facilities. So you could geofence just the indoor arenas, see how many people are using that. You can geofence the, the grandstands during horse racing to see how many visitors. So we're going to try to, to use that data and see if we can get some more information moving forward. Uh, as always, uh, we have free public access, um, available out there for people in Sweetwater County and visitors. Um, our Yellowstone Arena is always open to the public. Uh, we allow anybody to come in and, and use the RV dump. So if people in Sweetwater County are out camping outside of the area and come through there, they're welcome to stop there and use the RV dumps. Lots of green spaces, which you've seen picnic tables, the motocross track, fishing ponds, dog parks. All of those things are free for the most part. If we have a huge event going on, we close access. But 99% of the time, those are free and, and available to the public. Facility improvements last year, and you guys have seen some of these and some of these maybe not, but we did finish the Borstusk RV Park, um, the green space down there at that lower park, uh, the dog park, the fire pit, the pergolas. It was a huge hit last year. I think that's just going to make the RV parks more marketable for us. Um, the creature comforts are a big deal. Horse stalls, we replaced all the plastic in the front panels of our horse stalls. Um, grandstands has been a huge push for us using the horse racing money. So we've updated all of the grandstands lighting. Uh, we've addressed some safety issues and concerns down there. We've installed fans and emergency lighting in the indoor arena. We have the fence up around the motocross track. Um, I think it was Commissioner Slaughter had mentioned that National High School rodeo was onsite at the trap club last week. So they were also on our grounds for a couple of days. And, um, there will be 800 golf carts onsite this summer for the high school rodeo kids. So the fence around the motocross track was a pretty high priority for us so that we don't have golf cart races. We probably still will, but we did our best to keep them off of there. Uh, the Spicer Pavilion is fantastic. Um, finishing up the cabinets and stuff in there now, but we're getting a lot of use of that. And then all of our ticket booths and outbuildings were remodeled, sited and upgraded. So a couple of major maintenance projects that really weren't on the list, but had to happen. We did some major sewer repairs in our Pilot View Campground, which is the original campground that's been there since the late seventies, early eighties. Um, we did some water repairs in our midway so that we can shut different buildings down without having to have the whole grounds down at one time and electrical upgrades. And then with our capital money, we purchased new banquet tables, banquet chairs, some new livestock panels, a dump trailer and a sound system for our small hall. So in process, we are upgrading our booking software, uh, with the number of dates that we have going on and, and things happening out there. We really needed better software to keep track of things. Uh, we were supposed to have a trainer onsite this week to do the training for us and she ended up in the storm in Denver on Sunday and couldn't get rebooked into Rock Springs until Wednesday. So, so that's put off a little bit, but new booking software, working on updating drainage at the horse stalls, motocross tech and Borstusk. Uh, that lower end of the property sees a lot of the runoff from north of town. And so we have some serious issues with drainage. Lots of electrical upgrades. That seems to be a constant for us. The grandstands race office jockeys building is up finally. I've reported on that several times. So the picture is of the new race office. If any of you would like to come out and see it, it's, it's really nice. It's, it's coming along very quickly now. We have completely gutted the grandstands restrooms and are working on the remodel down there. Those should be done in the next week or two. The grandstands kitchen is being gutted and refreshed with new equipment. Uh, we have a new indoor arena heater coming. Uh, the roofing projects are in process. And then obviously all the routine maintenance and updates on the ground. So uh, just as a reminder, you guys know this for sure, I'm sure, but, um, 692 So just as a reminder, you guys know this for sure, I'm sure, but 692,000 was earmarked for us for capital projects this year. And we are expecting about 250,000 from the horse racing group invested in the facility for those capital projects. So most of our projects are coming in at budget. We went over budget on the roofing project, which you're all aware, but hopefully we can move some stuff around to make that work and, and come in where we need to be. So here's the summer and what it looks like and we hope to see you at some of these events. So the Wyoming High School Finals Rodeo will be here in June. Then we have the Escapade RV Rally immediately following that. Roll into National High School Finals Rodeo, Red Desert Roundup, Royal Crown, Wyoming's Big Show, Sweetwater Downs. National High School Finals is expecting 800 contestants, 1,800 contestants this year. So an increase from when we saw them last. They have one extra day of activities, so they move in starting on July 10th and they're there until the 20th. We'll have about 500 volunteers again and we'll have that volunteer program up and available for people to sign up here in the next week or two. And then the 2025 schedule is, is pretty full already and we're working on, we have dates into '27 at this point. So we're, we're booking about four or five years out. We do have our initial concepts on our master plan. Most of you took part in the conversations with Chip Overton when he was on, on grounds. They put together four sort of concept plans for us to look at. They took all of the feedback that was given to them by all the user groups and, and sort of tried to build something for everybody. Obviously, that's not how it will finish because we know we can't do something, you know, you just can't do that. You can't afford to do everything that everybody wants. So we'll take these four plans. We have discussed them with the board, we're happy to discuss them with the commission. We've talked about them in-house and we'll, we'll look at what works and what doesn't work and then come up with two plans that will be presented to, to you all in the public following that. But if you'd like more information on the master plan, I'd love to visit with you and you're welcome out anytime.
Be a good assignment for our new educator.
Yes, actually, he is on our, coming to our board meeting in March. He was going to come to the board meeting in February and I warned him that it was going to be very long as Commissioner Slaughter found out. So, so he's coming to meet us in March and meet the fair board and fair stuff is going really well. And we look forward to, to a busy summer. So we thank you guys for your support, really appreciate everything that you do for us. And we hope that you get to come out and enjoy some of the things that happen this summer.
Thanks Candy, great report and update there. Always a lot going on at your place, it's exciting. It's more of the positive updates that we hear and it's good to see you put some of that money to action. So kudos to you and your team and any other questions or comments? Commissioner Jones?
Couple of comments, just thanks Candy for the report. Been involved for quite a few years out there with you guys and there, there's several reasons for it though. I mean, I love to see the growth, the expansion, always moving forward. But I think one of the most important things you have going out there is community buy-in. And Mr. Spicer, appreciate what she did with the pavilion, but I think that's just a perfect example of the community buy-in that you all have created out there, which helps the commission want to support you, you know, just really makes it a place everybody wants to go. And you're increasing numbers. I mean, the, the folks coming from out of town are awesome, but the increasing numbers you're seeing at the fair and things like that, you know, it's got to be quite a few local people, so hats off to you.
Thank you.
Mr. Slaughter? Mr. Chairman, just Candy, once again, just comments that I made the other night at your board meeting. Remarkable what you accomplished with 16 employees. I think that you do a fantastic job. And Mary Ellen, I really enjoyed the meeting. We enjoyed seeing what the master plans are. It was much more in-depth at, at their meeting, so we got to, to go through each of those plans. And it was extremely interesting to see what they are looking forward to doing. And I wish them all the success in the world. I hope that we can help them to accomplish those things. Thank you.
Thank you, and I shared your comments about the staff. We had a breakfast meeting the next morning with the, with the crew that you saw there and I shared your comments and, and they appreciate that.
Any other comments?
Keep up the good work.
Thank you.
Yeah, that geofencing has me a little bit freaked out, but that's some interesting data that you can bring back. I mean, that's real life stuff, so makes me want to leave my phone at home. But anyway, thanks for sharing that and thanks for all that you do.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming over this morning.
Have a good day.
You too, and thanks for catching us up too. Next on the agenda commissioners is a break, which was slotted for 10:30, so Candy did as well there. It's 10:34, so let's come back in 15 minutes and resume at 10:50.
Yeah, thanks. Okay, we'll call this meeting back to order. Where we left off under tab C was item number five. We've got an update from the county assessor. This time I'll hand it over to Assessor Davis. Good morning, sir.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman. I am Dave Davis. I'm the Sweetwater County Assessor and I am here to update you on a couple of different things. I'm going to start with the legislation. The Assessors Association has been very, very aware of the bills that are running through. And especially the ones that are in regards to property tax. I can tell you yesterday Senate File sixty-eight, which was going to amend tangible personal property up to twenty thousand dollars. Did actually die in committee, so that one is no longer anything we need to be concerned about. What we think right now, and I say think because it seems like the legislature is kind of moving some of their deadlines. As far as bills coming out of committee and getting in certain places. We think House Bill three is still alive. We think that is an amendment or an exemption for people over sixty-five. That's a fifty percent reduction if you've lived in your house for twenty-five years. That won't be applicable until Taxure twenty twenty-five. And it does have a sunset date currently, which would be twenty twenty-seven. So the legislature has decided to actually put a sunset date on those. So it's in place and then it drops off and then the legislature at that point would have to consider whether to continue that legislation or not. Now, one of the, I believe it was in the Senate, somebody had mentioned. The other day that maybe they need to change that to a different date because that would be another. Another budget session, so they may want to do that adjustment to that sunset date in a different time. Hospital four, which is the property tax relief program. Is still in place. The legislature, House Bill four actually expands it and actually provides additional, a couple of tiers on the end. Would allow people currently, the way the situation is set up, you either qualify or you don't. So if you're one dollar over, you basically get nothing. So what they're trying to do is add a couple of tiers on the end. To allow people to get a, they would qualify, but for a reduced amount. So that's something that's still in the works and House Bill forty-five is actually the cap bill. That would cap increases on residential property. Initially, it was at five percent, but now it's at three percent. This is the one that they were going to do in tax year twenty twenty-four, so. All the assessors across the state are kind of in a holding pattern at this point, kind of waiting to see if that passes or not. Initially, like I said, it was five percent and now that cap has been amended to three percent. We believe House Bill fifty-two and House Bill one oh three did not come out of committee yesterday, so we do believe those are dead. But again, like I said, the. It seems to be that the deadlines for this stuff are kind of. Moving as the session goes on. So any questions I can answer on any of that?
Questions, commissioners? Been a whirlwind this session, so it's a lot to keep up with.
Oh, man, it has been crazy. Okay, so the reason I'm here today is basically to give you an update on things in the assessor's office. We have. Been able to get access to a product called Eagleview. Eagleview is aerial photography that the Department of Revenue has purchased for all twenty-three counties. The software is available, the imagery is available for government entities, so we share it with the cities, the towns. Anybody within our jurisdiction, road and bridge planning is owning, everybody can, that's within the government can have access to this. Law enforcement, if they choose all of that stuff, so. The reason this is significant is because we're going to make a major change in our office. We have that six-year review cycle that we have to. At least visit every improved property once every six years. And the I double A O, the International Association of Assessing Officers that I talked about during our appeal hearings. They actually have the standards for mass appraisal and they do allow. Aerial photography as a means to substitute for an onsite inspection. And if your photography is good enough. It works really, really well. And ours is. Now, the big reason I'm doing this is safety. You know, there's a huge cost savings that comes with this, but that's secondary. I am very fearful for my employees when they go on the public and knock on people's doors. And at this point. I'm just not willing to take that risk when I have another option. We recently had a field. Appraiser out at the truck stop at Wamsetter. And there was an employee working at the truck stop who had, didn't, did not take his medication that day. He actually came out of the building. Saw her and it was a huge crash. I mean, he actually ran at her, not to knock her over, but there was a huge. A crash is the best word and it was just in a situation where it was wrong time, wrong place. Wasn't directed at her personally, but it's another thing where it's just an example of where this can happen. And you know, like I said, I'm just not willing to do that anymore. So what I've got in front of you is the Eagleview photography. That I have and I've just pulled up an account and the reason I'm showing you this one is because of. This little white box that you see here. Okay, this box, this picture that's on my left. Is this tool is what we call Change Finder. Okay, so Change Finder allows us to look at a prior aerial photography and then look at the current aerial photography and see what's different. So in this situation, the software has gone through and highlighted this box, which is a shed. Okay, it was not available in the twenty twenty picture and it is there on the twenty twenty-three. So we were able to actually access this property, see what's changed. And make those adjustments in our camera system to actually calculate that the value of that improvement based on the aerial photography. Okay, we no longer have to do onsite inspections. And the reason this is so valuable is I can measure with this tool. But I can also get what we call oblique imagery. Okay, and this, it will actually show this view from the north, south, east and west. So right now, what the public sees is the ortho, which is the top down. Okay, this is, is internal for our purposes. But it allows us to potentially, you know, we can't tell if something's a shed or a carport. Well, with the oblique imagery, we can. We can't tell if the deck is covered or not. Can't get in the backyard. All of those kinds of things with the oblique imagery, we can do that now. And again, this is what I'm going to use for the next year or two, see how it works and we're going to substitute this and, and just so you understand the process for. For field inspections, so we actually give each appraiser like a subdivision. Say, okay, you print all out all the maps for the subdivision and then they take those out in the field. It's tons of paper, tons of time. You take the field, the, the copies out in the field, you're dealing with the wind, you're dealing with the dogs, you're dealing with the lock gates you can't get in. And you're basically just going up and down the street and you're making sure that what you have in front of you is what you see on the property. We just don't have to do that anymore. And then once that process is done, you bring that back. And then at, at some point that information gets entered into our camera system to actually update the values. Well. We don't have to do that now. We can sit at our desks. We can do the revow process with the aerial photography. And then we can also update the information in the camera system as we go. So we have saved a ton of time, a ton of effort, you know, toner, paper. Fuel, vehicle maintenance, time in the field, and again, all that's a bonus. But the biggest advantage to this again, in my perspective, is the safety. I just do not want my people out there if I don't have to. Now. It does have its limits. Some of the photography, it gets a little confused with trees. So that's why they try and fly stuff when they're, it's called leaf off. So they try and fly in either in the fall or in the spring before the trees bloom. And then make sure it gives us better pictures and better contrast when we actually do this kind of stuff. So. Great tool, going to save us a lot of time, but I keep saying that the, the biggest advantage for me at least is, is the safety of my employees. So that's where we're headed with this. Now, because of that. I had asked you in the past for a ninth full-time employee. And I also currently have a part-time seasonal position in my office right now or in my budget right now. I'm no longer going to need either of those. Okay, this process is going to save those positions. Okay, we've estimated between a hundred and a hundred and fifty thousand dollars per year for those two positions. The next thing we were going to do with this time savings and this efficiency. Is we were going to actually start going out and doing oil and gas equipment reviews. It's something that we've been. Talking about, but never really had the time to go out and do. We don't think anybody's out there actively cheating the system. It is a self-reporting system. And a lot of times I don't think the companies really know what they have, you know, currently Crowhart is. Our number one taxpayer and I need to get you that list we talked about, but Crowhart's our number one taxpayer. They used to be Southland, I believe. Southland used to be BP. BP used to be Amaco. And some of this equipment goes back to the eighties, so there's a lot of equipment out there that has just been transferred from owner to owner to owner. And you think it was pretty good when it was initially reported. But our, you know, part of our function, I think, is to trust but verify. So we are going to be able to do that, we hope. With this aerial photography now. What I had initially planned was to go do site inspections. And what you see in front of you now is all the wellheads in Sweetwater County. I looked yesterday and it's eighty-three miles from Green River to Wamsetter. Which is where we would probably have started. It just doesn't make any sense to do field inspections that far away. We just can't do that. What I'm hoping to be able to do. And what I'm hoping you will allow me to do. Is purchase aerial photography for the entire county. Now, I have been working with. The gentleman at Eagleview. Who is our contact person. And Eagleview has got a great relations with, relationship with the Department of Revenue. And in the past. The director of the Department of Revenue has had to, they had a specific line item for the Eagleview imagery. And the director would go and. Try and get this funding for this project and it was always a big ticket item because it was all across the state. And inevitably it seemed to get cut year after year. It's been in place long enough now with the department that it's no longer a specific line item. It's just part of their budget. It's just part of doing business. So I asked the department, is this more likely to continue? And they said absolutely. They think the Eagleview currently flies all of the populated areas. Every two or three years. So we're getting this aerial photography now on the department's dime. They're actually the ones paying for this for all of. The populated areas in Wyoming. And what I'm after is the unpopulated. So you can see here, I've turned on the aerial photography for Wamsetter. And it only goes around the boundary of the town of Wamsetter really. And but what we're trying to get. Is. And I went too fast. I'm trying to get imagery that is very similar to. This. And with this imagery. We should be able, and I think we're losing a little bit of the resolution here. But we should be able to actually identify the equipment that's reported from the company. And we should be able to confirm. Number wellheads. Number of separators, tanks. Any additional equipment, the solar panels, any of that stuff that's on that wellsite. That is not reported. And again, I'm not causing, calling anybody a liar. I'm just saying it's our job to confirm that. And we need to be able to do that. And the aerial imagery, I think, is a great tool for that. And I'm hoping. That we will be able to utilize that. Now, we initially started talking with the people at Eagleview. The question was, is it just, is it possible? And Converse County actually is doing this already. Converse County sent up a co-op with a lot of their taxing authorities, conservation districts, special district, solid waste districts, cemetery districts, all that kind of stuff. To actually do the imagery on their own. The department couldn't pay for it. They couldn't get it approved in their budget. Well, Converse County got together. And did it on their own. Now, the imagery is all tied together now, now that the department is able to pay for it all. They are actually providing this imagery for the populated areas and then anything outside that is our responsibility. And that's what we've been doing. That, or that's what we're trying to do now. I don't know why this has gotten so bad. When we talked to the people at Eagleview initially, they had seen, they had wanted to do. A. We just said, okay, wishlist, here, here's what we want to do, what would it cost? The dollar amount that came back was just over two million dollars. And what they're doing is flying the stuff that's not already flown by the department, so it's everything else. So in that situation, Megan and the GIS department actually worked with me and we were able to get a pretty good. Idea of the areas we would need to fly and the Wamsetter example is the best one, just because there's so much equipment out there. So once we identified the areas to fly, the price came back at a little over two million and what we were going to do was fly about thirty-five hundred square miles. At three inch imagery, which was three hundred and sixty dollars a square mile. And then the other sixty-seven hundred square miles at six inch imagery. And when you added them together, the six inch was a hundred and fifteen dollars per square mile. It was just over two thousand. Or two million, I'm sorry. And they were willing to break this up into a three-year contract, so we could break it up basically almost like lease payments on a vehicle. Since our initial conversation, Eagleview's come back and the three-inch imagery has gotten way less expensive. Now it's about two hundred and twenty dollars a square mile. So it's much less expensive now. And I didn't mention this to you guys when we spoke earlier, but the, the offer. Did have our expiration date of about, of June thirtieth on it. Now that may be able to be extended and, and we'll work on that depending on the outcome here. But with the adjusted cost from the two million, two million dollars. With the original pricing, we can get this down to one point five five million. And we were teasing the guy from Eagleview, you know, Sweetwater County is a pretty, pretty big county. Get me a Groupon. We've got a lot of square miles. I want a discount. Well. That's when the offer came back and they actually did give us almost five hundred thousand dollars off the price. So I, I think it's something that our office will be able to quantify. Over time, we will be able to determine how much value we are receiving. And to be honest, the number might be zero. You know, there may, they may be reporting every single piece of equipment just exactly like they're supposed to. I don't know that and honestly, I think we will find value. I think we will be able to come up with and we will be, be able to identify the equipment we pick up due to the aerial photography. We'll be able to quantify it and we'll be able to come back to you at some point and say, this is the amount of equipment that we have picked up. I understand it's a big investment. I, I get it. But this is just the first step, you know, if we're truly going to start using GIS to its full potential. I think we've got to have a good base layer and this would be the good base layer. Now, after doing a little research, I went out, I had some help, but I went out and found. What the city of Casper is doing with their GIS. So. If you want to know where. Casper's. Version of our Starbucks goes. There are the routes. If you want to know where. The sewer septic information is. The information is there. If you want to know. Where the parks and the trails are. If you want to know, there's a realtor review, there's public safety information, road closures, utility hookup. where the parks and the trails are. If you wanna know, there's a realtor review. There's public safety information, road closures, utility hookups, reservable park locations, zoning information. I get it. A lot of this stuff is, is, is city-based rather than county-based, but this is how far we can take GIS. But we have to start somewhere. And this is, this is the place and this is the time, I think, for us to be able to do this. I think it's a, it, there will be a huge benefit again to my office and again in a quantifiable format. But I think planning and zoning will get a huge benefit out of this. Um, if you're looking at nuisance properties or you're looking to see if a property has been constructed, you'll have an aerial photography. If we're gonna do um, you know, the, the economic development, we wanna see what the middle Baxter Road looks like over time, we can do that. Um, if you wanna see um, where the equipment changes. I mean, this change finder deal, what I would really like to do in the best case scenario is to actually use this for oil and gas equipment. So right now, we found a shed. The software was able to find a photograph that didn't have a shed and then it did. What I would really like to be able to do is use that same tool and say, okay, this is a, a piece of ground that had no wellsite. And now there is a wellsite. And that's the kind of stuff we would be able to find. And again, from our desk, we're doing it in the, the safest and the most cost-effective fashion to make sure that, again, you keep using this phrase, trust but verify. We wanna make sure that we're, we're making, we're holding these, these companies accountable and confirming what they're reporting. And again, we're not saying they're cheating. I just don't know that they really know what they have. With all the mergers and acquisitions out in the industry right now, sometimes the equipment inventory gets lost. And they actually rely on us to provide that to them. And this would be a way for us to reply, to give them what we have, but also confirm what they have. And I'm really hoping that this is something we can do. And I would be happy to stand for any questions.
Thanks Dave. Very interesting. When we were down in Cheyenne with the WCCA, they discussed this briefly in regards to the, you know, oblique imagery. And I, I believe it was twenty-five licenses per county is what they were granting. Um, so I was a little bit confused when I saw your, your report there, but it sounds like those are for the populated areas and what you're after is the unpopulated or the less populated rather. And trying to hone in on that. But if I understand it correctly, right now, you're not doing the oil and gas? And so you're saying that this would give you the opportunity. So the additional expense is just to have these areas flown, so to speak. How often are those updated? How, how often is the imagery updated?
What we would do, Mr. Chairman, is we would have to actually contract with Eagleview to have another flight. So when I talk about doing the change finder thing with the oil and gas equipment, we had no previous layer. So if we do this first one, we'll have that layer in place. And then in, and I think three years is probably a decent time. But we don't need to do it every year and we don't need to do it every couple of years. I think three or four years is adequate. And then we would have to fly it again. Now Eagleview did offer us that same dollar per um, dollar per square mile, if we wanted to contract in that additional flight further down the road. Whether we wanna do that or not, I don't know. I'm very concerned about getting the first layer in. And now, over time, what's happened with this aerial imagery is it's gotten less expensive. You know, even the last flyover the Department of Revenue did. They actually, for whatever reason, the contract price was reduced. So the department had some money they had been budgeted given by the, the legislature, but they didn't act, they didn't actually spend it because Eagleview had dropped the price. So what, when that situation, Department of Revenue reached out to other, to the counties and said, okay, if you need something else flown, let us know because we've got some extra money. And we actually did work with Megan again in the GIS department and we found some areas we wanted to fly again to get updated photography. And it was great. It was a, it was a huge, huge win for us. So when we're doing agricultural buildings, sometimes we can't get in the bat, you know, we can't get through the gates or um, and that was the areas we flew was down in McKinnon, Washum, Farson, Ranger, those kinds of places. Places where you don't really wanna be out wandering out by yourself anyway. Um, this is a huge, huge tool that helps us with that. But the department, again, just to be clear, they fly the populated areas as part of their contract. What we would fly is everything else. So yeah.
Do you know with the department, how often they're gonna be flying them?
It's every two or three years. And again, it depends on budgets. But yeah, they, they do that. It seems like every county gets updated, I think, every couple of years. Now, it takes them quite a while to do it, compile the data and then get it out to us. You know, they'll, they'll estimate the flight in the fall. And I think they did twenty-twenty-three, so they did the fall, um, actually it was May of last year and we got the aerial imagery like in October. So I would think the next flight for this would be, you know, twenty-five, twenty-six is when that would come with the department.
Just curious because if it's, you know, one and a half million dollars and you're assessing them every six years, I believe, right? So you could be looking at two flights within that timeframe. And so is that, you know, three million by the time you get to that? And so I'm just trying to figure out. I mean, I, I see the the flexibility with it and the ease of, you know, being able to work from your office and all that. Just trying to understand, you know, how often and accurate, not necessarily accurate, but how often it's updated and, and what that looks like financially speaking.
Yeah. And as far as the second flight, again, we can evaluate that as we go through. It's not anything I'm asking for in this. Again, my, my purpose here is to get the initial flight, the initial base layer. And again, I'm, I'm talking to you about what it's gonna do for me, you know, but road and bridge engineering, planning and zoning, and that's just the stuff off the top of my head. Conservation districts are gonna use this tremendously, I would be, I would believe. Solid waste districts, you know, we, the, when I was talking to Gene about this, we were talking about, you know, the, the, a couple of years ago, the um, the runoff in Rock Springs, how they have such a hard time with that. Well, the problem isn't within the city of Rock Springs. The problem is outside the county with the drainages that are out there. You know, if you wanna keep an eye on the drop structure, you know, again, it's just at the time of the flight. But it's those kinds of things that, that are available within this imagery that saves, you know, you don't have to go to, you don't have to go make a road trip to go find this thing. You can see it online and have a pretty good idea where you're at. And, you know, law enforcement was actually involved in the first conversation that we did have with the sheriff's office. Um, they were kinda lukewarm on the deal, but I think as we get it and get exposed to it, I think it's something that may be something that they see valuable, especially out in those, those areas where, you know, they may not know where they're going. And Google may not have been there for a while. So this stuff, we know at a point in time, this is what it looked like and there's no doubt. And for our purposes, like I said, I think this is, I understand a big investment, but I think it's a very, very good tool for us.
Do you see, I mean, once you get, I, I would assume initially you're gonna find additional equipment, just, you know, not intentional, but just because of what you said, you know, of not necessarily knowing what some of these companies have or how many times they've changed hands or, you know, however that works. And so the initial vest, investment, probably you could argue that, you know, may pay for itself. But then if, if you're talking the same investment every three years, you know, I mean, convenience, I get it, but I would think that, you know, is that less staff time as far as not having to travel to these locations, you know, does it ever get to the, the point where it's, I guess, not as much work after that initial phase? You see what I'm saying?
Uh, because of all the well sites that we've got, um, if we're gonna confirm every year, you know, and what we're gonna do with this one, let, and let's just assume that this works, that you guys say absolutely, let's do this and we're gonna get after it. Um, in that situation, you know, we're gonna take the returns from the year before that we already have. And we're gonna work them all through the summer. And we're gonna make sure, as long as, as we're doing our other revows, we're gonna have oil and, people doing oil and gas spot checks to make sure that they're actually, what they're reporting is what we actually have in the system as far as our values are concerned. And we're gonna be doing that all along because just with the sheer number of wells, there's no way for us to keep up. I mean, and I don't, I mean, I, I said yesterday, you know, a thousand wells, and I bet it's probably significantly more than that because some of these wellheads have been out there since the fifties. So, I mean, this, that's a huge, huge amount of um, accounts that have to be looked at and touched. And we would start that process as soon as we got the data. We wouldn't wait for the returns to come in. We would use the returns that we currently had. And with this software, um, Eagleview has assured me that we'll be able to link these, these well sites to our camera system via the API number. It's on the well. So I'll be able to pull up that wellhead and I'll pull up, I'll see the API number on the map. I'll pull it up in realware and I'll be able to compare right then. I'll have the return, I'll have the picture and I'll have what was actually on the account. And we can actually, you know, look at that information and get this stuff correct. Um, I, I, and like I said, I keep saying it, but a huge investment. But again, this is just the first use of this. And I'm sure when the city of Casper started looking at their GIS, they did, they had a purpose. But as they kept going with that purpose, it just, it became a much better resource for the public. You know, when you look at all this stuff they've gone, I mean, they are really getting after it with their stuff. And I think that's something, you know, we could potentially get to.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Toma.
Well, you might, I, I'm not sure he caught that. If he did the second flight, it, only thing it's gonna come up is the changes.
Correct. Well, that would be part of it.
But you wouldn't have to do the whole, have a staff evaluate every site again. It's just would, you tell it to do the, where the changes are and it would highlight that, that for you on the second round.
That is correct, Mr. Chairman and Commissioner Toma. You're exactly right. If we did the second flight and they did include the change finder tool with that second flight at no charge. So if we did wanna go ahead and get both flights set up now at the price we currently have, that, that would be a tool that we would get for free, basically. Because it's not free, i- i- if we pay for it later, it may or may not be free, I guess. I don't know. Um, but yeah, the change finder tool would be great for that. And that was the ultimate goal. But again, today, I'm just really looking for discussion on that initial base layer that we would have.
Yeah, I guess the point I was getting at is you're to identify those changes, you're still having to fly the whole area. So is that the same cost as the initial investment?
Yeah, it would probably be very similar because the cost they're doing for us here is based on the square miles they're flying. And what we may do, you know, on the second flight is, you know, we may not fly the rural areas, maybe we just fly the three-inch imagery and fly it over the areas we designated for the oil and gas equipment. And now in that situation, that's two hundred and twenty square mile or two hundred and twenty square mile and those thirty-five hundred square miles would be about seven hundred and seventy thousand. So back to Commissioner Toman's point, absolutely. We could say, okay, the rural stuff is fine. We don't see much changes there. We don't need to do that. But let's fly the, the oil and gas fields again and then use the change finder tool and see the additional equipment that has been installed since the last flight. And again, it, just like the shed, it highlights it for, for us. So it's, the work's already done.
Mr. Jones.
Mr. Chairman, I have a couple of questions. So if I understand it right, if we flew it the first time, then you fly it again in, say, three years, we're roughly looking at five hundred thousand dollars a year.
Correct.
So let's say that covers the six years with two flights, but it's five hundred thousand dollars a year is our expense.
Yeah, it would be, um, with the adjusted prices, when I did the math, it was five hundred sixteen thousand, seven hundred and sixty-five dollars per year with the initial flight. Now, if we choose to do the next one, that would be where that, that's seven hundred and sixty-nine thousand would come in. So we would do, we would commit at this point to fly the whole county, three inch and six inch. And then we would fly in three years where the oil and gas activity is at the three inch again. And, you know, we'll say eight hundred thousand is, it, we're just gonna round up because there may be some additional costs at that point. But yes, we could do that. And then we would be able to see the changes in those areas and be able to identify that equipment.
So say that again, the second time around in three years would be seven hundred thousand dollars?
If it's the same price, because the price I gave you only includes this flight. Because I didn't wanna assume we were gonna do it in three years. So we're starting with just the base layer. Because again, I think there's a huge value there. And I think that'll help us get started on this, this project. Because we can do this project without change finder. We don't have to have it show us the difference. We can just do it by looking at the well sites. So the initial flight is a million five. So it's five, if we break it up into three payments, it's five hundred thousand, but that's the initial flight. And we just broke it up over three payments. And that includes three inch and six inch imagery, the three inches in the areas where the oil and gas equipment is, and then the six inches of everything else. So, and then in three years, we would fly that three inch area again. And the cost for that, if it stays the same, would be about seven hundred and seventy thousand. So we're a million two, I guess, is where we're at roughly, if we wanted to do both.
Why wouldn't we, yeah, why wouldn't we fly everything every three years, I guess?
Certainly could. We certainly could. And we may not see value there. And, and, you know, we may say, you know, there's, there's there's sixty-seven hundred square miles out there that nobody's been to. So maybe we don't need to fly that again. But we know there's activity in the oil and gas fields. We know that.
So then does the change finder, I assume the change finder just looks for any change, not just additional? I mean, the picture you used was an additional shed.
Yes, sir.
So is it only looking at what's added?
Added or deleted. It looks at both. It's looking at changes in polygons, you know, and it compares one to the next. And it, it can either be something that's added, just like you're saying, or, you know, shed that's torn down or garage is torn down or a place where there's a fire. You know, any of that kind of stuff. It looks for all of that.
I guess I'm just concerned on the oil and gas side of things because um, I guess I'm concerned that something could slip through the cracks and we're gonna show equipment that doesn't exist. And I'm trying to figure out if that could happen or not. That's what I'm trying to get right in my head. I just wanna make sure that we aren't saying there's equipment where it used to be and maybe it's not there because equipment does move around and
Sure.
could be depending on the day that you fly. But I don't know, I'm just having a hard time wrapping my head around that one to be a hundred percent convinced that everything we're receiving is completely accurate. Maybe it is. I'm not saying it isn't.
Right.
I'm just trying, I just wanna make sure we aren't gonna tag people for stuff they
No.
don't have or they've changed or.
And Commissioner Jones, in that situation, we, most of the companies that do report the equipment have, they have field guys out there doing maintenance, that kind of stuff. And we work really well with the tax agents that represent these companies. So when they say there's something there, and if we have a picture that says, well, wait a minute, that's their plus, this other stuff, you know, then they would send the field handout or whatever, or we would go out, either or, you know, and, and take new pictures at that point in time. And I actually talked to the assessor in Laramie County where that was the case, where they had had, they were doing something similar, where they looked at the imagery and said, well, this is what we show, but the company reported, say, half of that. Well, the company said, oh, no, that stuff's gone. So they drove out and they looked. Sure enough, it was still there. So and, and, and we keep talking about increases and I wanna be clear. You know, and, and they should have said this at the beginning, we just wanna get it right. I'm not trying to find value. I'm not trying to catch people cheating. I'm not trying to do any of that. What I'm trying to do is say, what's out in the field that actually needs to be valued is being valued. And I don't care if it goes up or goes down. It makes no difference to me. I wanna make sure it's right. I don't wanna overtax anybody for anything I'm not supposed to get. But I certainly don't wanna undertax anybody on stuff I am supposed to get. And what we're trying to do is verify both. Because you're exactly right. This equipment does change. Now, when I talk about equipment, I'm, in my head, I'm thinking more wellheads, you know, tanks, you know, solar panels, the separators, that kind of stuff. The stuff that would be there until they actually plugged and abandoned. And we could confirm all that with the YOGC, the Wyoming Oil and Gas Conservation Commission. We can look at all that stuff there to confirm too. So we've got a lot of tools out there, but having this base layer for this imagery would be the best tool we have.
I'm just trying to get it right in my head. That's a lot of money.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Slar.
Dave, first I'd like to say, in, in what we looked at yesterday, the resolution was much better. And, and you could see those sites. So I, I think it would be much better than what we saw in, in the demonstration today. But obviously with some of the comments that you've made after your presentation, you have looked at doing partial areas of the county. Have you looked at potentially just doing the area of Wamsetter where the, the highest population of those wells are and starting with that? And then flying after that? Because apparently you've looked at that for the second flight. So did you look at it potentially for just doing the first flight? Would it be the seven hundred thousand dollars if you were looking at doing that or?
Correct. And, and what we did is we had Eagle, we break it up and because we were trying to fly the entire county, we had them break it up and the more and, you know, populated, when the department looks at it is where people are. When I say pop, you know, equipment is what I'm looking at. So we were trying to fly the heavily um, developed areas, which would be that map that we show earlier with all of the orange dots and then on the eastern half, and then all the blue and purple dots on the western half. So that is something that is an option where we could fly just those areas. And I would assume that the price they gave us would hold and that would be two hundred and twenty um, a square mile, which would be a sub, about seven hundred and seventy thousand, which would be that part. Where the bulk of that comes in is the remaining miles at the six inch um, resolution.
The, the main part of my question, and, and the reason I relate that is, I see this as basically a commitment that we're putting before further commissions to pay off this project if we were to do it. If we chose to do this over three years and then did, flew it again, we, and, and that commission at that time chose to pay it over three times, we'd be paying it over six different fiscal years, basically. We'd be committing that. With not having any idea where our budget is at the current time, I think, once again, this is kind of similar to a discussion we had at this time last year when you wanted to add people. I think the timing is a little bit bad because we don't have any idea where our budget is going to be at this point. Now, I, if I heard you correctly, you said that the, the drop dead date on this would be June thirtieth, but it could potentially be delayed.
I would assume that, um, Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Slatter, I would assume that um, only because that seems to be, you know, June thirtieth, at least in my head, appears to be the end of a fiscal year and they may be having, trying to get contracts set up before the end of the fiscal year.
I, I would really like to see us look at this a little bit more fully, look at whether we wanted to do potentially the, the full amount. And then try and incorporate that within our new budget and see where it fits and, and look at it at that point in time. So as far as I, you had somewhat alluded to yesterday, you'd like for us to make a decision today. I don't think that I am in a position where I could make a decision on, in the affirmative on this at this point in time. But I, I think there's a lot of But I I think there's a lot of um, benefit to this potentially, and I could certainly support it. I just don't have enough information right now to do it.
And I I, at least on my screen, it's updated where it actually makes sense now. Um, that's, that's the imagery we're talking about.
Right.
So on that site, and I'm going to touch this, so if it goes away, I apologize. But um. This is the imagery I'm talking about. And it also, we don't have the oblique here. That's another tool that we would add to this for the flyover, but you can see. That's pretty good. And that situation and and you know, back to Commissioner Jones's point. You know, we could be removing equipment. Again, the purpose here is not to add value. We can identify it if we do. But we we are also going to have companies that have just reported the same equipment forever and not updated anything. And in that situation, our purpose again is to get it right. It's not something where um, we're just here to add value. We're trying to make sure we're treating everybody the same. So would the commission be interested in potentially having the Eagleview people come back? And showing uh, doing a presentation and potentially doing the thirty five hundred. Square miles where the oil and gas development is? And see that presentation and go from there? I mean, it's it's not going to be much different than what I've shown you here. If the if the price tag is the issue, and we just want to do this for the oil and gas equipment. Then the number is closer to seven hundred and seventy thousand. I'm going to round up to eight hundred thousand, just to be safe. But if we're interested in that, I can pursue this with the Eagleview people and get information regarding that. Um, that's where most of the value is going to come from. Um, and and again, that was my purpose was this oil and gas, these oil and gas field inspections. I was trying to do them just like. The the field inspections on residential and commercial. I was trying to do them from our desks. Again, the safest, most cost effective way to do this work.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Richardson. Dave, I, I, I see a lot of potential here. Um, but I, but I think as. You're going to be a victim of your own success. You mentioned how everybody else can use this. Can you work on um, visiting with all those different organizations, land use engineering? Um, even the treasurer's office titles, if they, you can find a use. You, you showed us how spending five hundred thousand can save you a hundred and fifty thousand. Can you work on getting us to that whole five hundred thousand? I can absolutely see how GIS. Would benefit from this, but I'd like to see dollar amounts countywide, not just from the assessor's office.
You know, and we can work on that. Now, just keep in mind, when we talked yesterday, we talked about getting buy-in from, you know, like the municipalities, for instance. Um, your municipalities are already part of the flyover from the Department of Revenue. So for them to be putting in more money for something they're already getting for free, I I don't think that.
I I agree. I'm more, I'm more concerned about land use and engineering and and law enforcement, things under our umbrella. And and the benefits there. And and they don't always have to be dollar benefits.
Sure.
I I think there's, I think there's other tangible benefits here that we can be looking at, but I I like to see. All of them in front of me before I make a decision.
Yeah, and we did include some of the major players. Like I said, we have the sheriff's office involved and and I had Gene and and Megan involved. Um, Eric was out of town that day, but we did have those people again, because those are, those are the obvious ones, you know, I don't know how this is going to benefit titles. I don't know. It's not going to benefit the treasurer's office, I don't believe. Um, but it is something that will, you know, I, the benefits. That we identify today, they're going to be, they're going to be a factor of ten in five years. Again, just simply because of how far this will go and how many agencies are going to use it. I mean, you know, just off the top of my head, Star Transit showing their routes, uh, maybe the senior center showing their routes for Meals on Wheels or. You know, any of those kinds of things. If we're going to have road closures or we're going to do any of that kind of stuff, all that can be pushed. Right out to this, the GIS portion of the county's website. And it might not be dollars, but it may be just benefit. And sometimes it's hard to put dollars to that. But the tool is there. And again, the the, we got to start somewhere. And if we're truly going to use GIS the way we need to, this is, I, again, I think this is the best way to start. Get that base layer, and if we can commit to that, everything else after that will just start flowing. And it'll be a huge win for the entire county.
Additional comments, questions, commissioners?
I guess I just have one thing. I I'm going to have a hard time supporting just singling out the oil and gas and saying those are the ones we're going to fly. I mean, there's. But I guess we're going to do what we do the whole county. I don't.
I agree.
Single anybody out is probably something I'm going to get on board with.
Sure. No, and I agree completely. And I think the benefits countywide, I mean, like I said, the price tag's huge. But I think the benefits are are just as big. I really do think that will be. And we won't know today, we may not know tomorrow. But two or three years down the road, we're going to have this tool and we're going to wonder why we waited so long. I really believe that.
So Dave, when you keep talking about countywide, are you talking, I mean, the populated areas of the county are already done.
Correct.
So when you say countywide, are you talking all other? Are you also talking about redoing what's already been done as far as populated?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, we would just fly what what is not flown by the department. So we're not doubling up anything. So the department will fly the area, their areas that they budgeted for, and Eagleview would just fly fly the rest.
Yeah, I would assume that. I just wanted to make sure for clarification on that.
That is correct.
Mr. Tim.
Commissioner Tolman.
So are we going to be in the Board of Equalization meetings for the whole month of August then? Because you you gave them a different assessment.
Um, we're, we might be in the Board of Equalization for, it might not be August this year, it might be September. With the legislature and us having to wait to get started and sending assessments out, it has been. We've all been hung up before, while the legislature finishes their, what they're doing with some of the bills and stuff. So. But yeah, we we're probably going to have some. I'm not going to lie to you.
Mr. Chairman, one other quick question.
Mr. Slaughter.
Dave, if if we were to say today that we wanted to move forward with this, how long would it be before you would have access to the information and be able to start using it?
Um, the flights, um, we didn't talk with Eagleview about the actual flights, but again, they usually try and fly. Leaf off, but there's not a lot of leaves out in the area they're flying. So I don't know if they could do it sooner than that. Um, best case scenario, I would think would be end of this year, early next year. That would be absolutely if we said, okay, yeah, let's get a contract today, have the attorney's office look it over. Have Tim figure out what storage requirements are for the the imagery, that kind of stuff, and get all of that stuff in a box. I would think if we we were, be very lucky to have it by the end of the year.
Any other feedback? Doesn't sound like we'll be taking any action on this today, Dave. I appreciate the information. I have got a couple of emails since we've been up here talking and. You know, the sheriff's office in particular does not see any, you know, long-term benefit because most of what they need for their. I guess intelligence is is real-time views. So I don't know that it'll be much of an impact from that regard. I. I enjoy technology. We just heard from Candy and the scary fact that we've all, you know, been sitting up here getting geo fenced for. Two and a half hours now, but um, you know, I I see the benefit for. Being able to utilize the technology that's there. I think that's, you know, it was. Pretty big win on the state as far as investing in in bleak imagery and, you know, trying to become more accurate. I I struggle a little bit with just the the long-term cost. I agree with Commissioner Richards. If if we can figure out, you know, what other departments it will, rather than just assuming, you know, benefit. And I think that can help with the decision-making process. Um, you know, we do have time with the the budgeting process and everything. Where we can kind of weed through then too, once we have a better idea. But I guess, you know, the biggest one I'm struggling with is. The oil and gas equipment isn't being done right now. And so I I understand wanting to be accurate with that. But if we're looking at a seven hundred and seventy thousand dollar price tag, then, you know, we need to have. Some justification that it's just not an ongoing.
Well, and 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 just to be clear too, Mr. Chairman, the um, the oil and gas equipment is like personal property, it's self-reporting. So in that situation, you know, what the company gives us is the is the repair and the rendition. You know, if we were in a small county like Johnson County, where, you know, it's a hundred miles from one end to the, whatever it is, I mean, yeah, that's different. They can go out in a day and check ten or fifteen or twenty well sites and confirm data, take pictures, compare returns, that kind of stuff. It's eighty-three miles from Green River to Wamsetter. And that's just one way. So for us to go out and do all that confirmation out there. Big ask, you know, and again, we're going to save some money. We are going to um, have have time much better spent. Doing debt, doing desk reviews on the residential and commercial properties. But to do this stuff out in Wamsetter, you know, I I just don't know how we do it out there. I just don't know. Without the imagery. I don't know how we do it. At this, at that point, we're just assuming what the companies give us is accurate. And it might be, again, I'm not calling anybody cheaters in any way, shape or form, but again, my job as the assessor is to list and value all taxable property. Even though this is self-reported, I think I have a duty to to go out and confirm some of that stuff time to time. With the um, self-reported stuff, which is the personal property stuff as well, even the business personal property, and we do that. But this stuff out in the field is a little bit tougher. And it's something where, you know, we need this technology to be able to help us do that. And, you know, if you, if anybody wants to come see this again, see this information, you know, if if Mr. Jones, you want to come and visit. Also, we'll sit down. I'll show you how we put the equipment in real where. I'll show you how we would do it from the website. Again, we won't have the the. Um, issues we had with this, and I will go through it line by line and and go through it with you and show you what we're trying to accomplish. I'm going to leave this at this point. Um, I know you're getting in the budget process now. Um, I thought this was a great use of reserves, again, investment that had quantifiable results that we could tie things to. If you change your mind, by all means, don't be, you know, come see me and we'll, we'll talk some more. Maybe Eagleview. When I tell them today that it it wasn't as well received as I had hoped, then maybe they'll come back and things will be different. I don't know that. Uh, they're pretty straightforward and they're pretty good at what they do. Uh, they have a great relationship with the Department of Revenue. Um, they have a great relationship with all of the counties. They do additional training on sites. Any issues we have with the imagery, they're they're right there to help us. So I don't know. I don't think there's going to be a lower price later, but like I said, at this point, we'll see what they do. And if I have something to report, I'll come back and let you know.
Okay.
Where are they at? Where are they located?
Colorado, I believe, is where Jason Brown is the guy that we talk to all the time and he's Colorado. He's actually come out a couple of different times to assessors' meetings and Waco, actually do presentations. Um, super, super guy and just that their, their product is cool. When they go through and they show. Like we had the wildfires in Colorado, and they actually showed the before and afters. That was one of the services that you get Eagleview is that disaster recovery and they will actually disaster response. They'll actually go out and fly the area after a natural disaster at cost. And so you have the tools you need like for us. To be able to see which improvements are no longer there. You know, we had a huge flood or a huge wildfire or tornado. That kind of stuff could be able to do that again without bothering people on site, without being in a disaster area. Just a fantastic tool and they are, they are a great partner. Um, very, very glad we've had them, you know, to help us with our appraisal days.
We got a lot to get accomplished. Dave, appreciate the information. We're going to move along and try and make up some time here. Next under tab C is item number six, a resolution to vacate in County Road one twenty-four. The Eden East North with us today is Public Works Director Nagurski. Good morning.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman. So what you have before you is a resident to vacate uh, County Road one twenty-four um, in the Persian Eden area. Uh, this is, we've done before, is about step number two of step five to seven. And the reason I say this, it depends on the viewers and what action you guys take, whether we have to go to steps or whether we go to step five. Um, what this allows us is to really get started. We received a petition. The petition was deemed valid. Um, and we're going through process now that's laid out by statute. Um, so what you guys do is decide if you want to take this under Adam. Um, and part of that, we will assign a viewer um, to do this. As you know, most of the time. Um, Andy's done a very good job in our office of being the viewer. Um, the things that has to be done with the viewer is to be an impartial viewer. Um, one of the reasons we're actually going to go outside for an impartial viewer is because I've talked to Andy a lot out this road and everything like that. I don't want to sway. He swayed one or the other. We're about to, somebody just gave him a log file and said, you guys go find the research and find if this is a good idea. Um, as part of that um, process, uh, we're asking for the petitioner to um. Defray expense amount of fifteen hundred, you know, advertising, all that kind of stuff. Um, as part of that, we do is we. Uh, create a project account, everything goes into that, everything comes out. And then at the end, it's when it was through with their money left over, we give back to them. Um, a lot of reasons as to other county engineers, public directors throughout the county is to. When this was for it, it stopped a lot of first things where people don't want to vacate this, I want to vacate. And you have to through this whole entire process and that county absorbs, you know, all the costs. Um, so I think that's a fair, um, it's a ask. Uh, the other ask that we have, and this is the uh, where we will. Uh, appoint all Robert Gerard, um, who is a licensed professional engineer to be the viewer on our behalf. What happens, that is once the viewer, so he come and present guys, then we're on step three. You guys decide if vacation is worth it, if not. We advertise it, um, posted all of that kind of, and then we're, then we're going to state statute.
Thanks, Gene. Question, commissioners?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Slaughter.
Gene, we have had a lot of discussions on this property. I went out and and viewed the property to see what um. From on level, exhibit what it was. And I'm curious, some of the conversations that we had had, if we were to vacate this road. Were to try and potentially put a road across north end of property, it would connect County Road one to four. I I leave, after our, as conversations that we've taken that off the table, we're not really considering doing.
Correct.
At this point in time. But you have talked with the other landowners that are involved. And there is uh, to be access to some of the lands that would be off the east. Um, but potentially we're not accessible if this road were, which this road is not. And you know, in effect, the road is not there. You can see where it wants us. Um, but. Are you convinced that the other parts with this uh, believe that this is a solution? Or are we just still have confrontation with respect to this if we continue for vacating this?
The politically correct answer is this is the right way to solve the conflicts by statute. Uh, there will always be conflict, land dealings like water. Um, you know, it's drawn the pereral six. And I see the six and Chair West sees it a nine. It's just your pointer. It's, um, this is the way to resolve those disputes. By state statute and go through the statute process, all those. Um, there is other alternatives and stuff like that, but it's been thrown out. I mean, you know, I've worked with all parties and there is other solutions. However, vacation is the thing that kicks everything off.
Any other comments back, commissioners?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Tol.
I wasn't initially, but once the years got involved, I back, I have not contacted Mr. Mallard or Mcmurray's. But I understand was some little issue about. Status of that road, what what was that determination that the other lawyer went you're out?
I not added any other contact from after the initial, initial thing from right now, the way that we go about it is. We cannot get it of a county road without going through the vacation process. Just because we haven't maimed the county road or upgraded county road or done anything, uh, there is a lot of courses out there where it says. It's because the county did that, they don't get rid of the county road. So the vacation process is set out in state statute, we follow. This is the same process that if we want to create a county road, we'd go exact same process, just in reverse. Um, you know, it's very late. There's a poll on a whole of court cases on that. I think I have a bunch of it. Probably has eighty pages of cases referencing there. If you just want some midnight reading, that's not fun.
Additional feedback?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Richardson.
I'd move we approve resolution number two four dash zero three dash Eden dash zero one. A resolution to consider vacating County Road one twenty-four Eden East, second north.
Do you have a motion to approve resolution two four oh three E N O one by Commissioner Richards? Do we have a second? Second. Second by Commissioner Jones. Question?
Mr. Chairman, yes, just, just one further comment. Um. Because our Public Works Director has has told us this is what he believes is the the best steps towardly moving forward. I will support this. I'm still somewhat concerned with some of that area. But I believe that if he's telling me that's what we should bring and we should be moving forward in this, in this manner.
Very good. Further decision?
I mean to abstain, just because I did have a discussion with uh, Mr. McMurray family at 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 the early time. I mean to abstain just because I did have a discussion with, uh, Mr. McMurray family at, at, at the earlier time and it seemed that it had been resolved. And then now it's not. So I, I just don't think it's, I don't want to take sides either way.
Further discussion? Hearing none. We do have a motion and a second on the tape. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose nay.
And I'm abdaining.
Motion pass is four, one with one abstention. Thanks, Gene. Next under T D is item number seven, which we removed at the beginning of agenda approval. So next we'll move right along into item eight, which is discussion on the combined communications joint powers board appointment. As you recall from last meeting, Mickelson from Rock Springs reached out asking if the county would be interested in swapping our appointments on this board. Our current appointment is Alex Visser in the city's Park Allred. Um, so in order to accomplish this, Commissioner Richard and I have been going back and forth on email chain, but the governing bodies create the vacancies on these boards. And so to do that, we asked each of those individuals first if they were willing to do such, and they agreed to that. So the proper channel is for both of them to vacate their seats through resignation. They did that. And that's in your packet. Alex, which was a contingent vacancy, so long as this Rock Springs turns around and reappoints, we got the same from Clark. So with that, we do need to create vacancies. So I would, I guess entertain a motion to accept and establish the vacancy on the Sweetwater County Buying Communications Joint Powers Board and by appoint Clark Allred to fulfill the inspired term.
Mr. Chairman, do you want to do separate motions on that? I'm, I'm assuming.
I think we can incorporate it into one, been advised, so.
So moved.
Got a motion by Commissioner Richards, second.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Jones. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose nay. Motion's unanimous. Thanks for your work on that, Commissioner. That was a lot more than I, uh, initially when I discussed with Perry Mickelson, but it's good to be accurate. Next up is a item number nine hundred and C, a board of health appointment. This appointment must be a doctor of medicine. We did have, I think, three or four applications, but only one of those had a doctor of medicine. And so in your packet, and that's why you only see the one there for Dr. Alicia Gray. Dr. Poyer has been serving in this role for the last eight years and her term is up. So just wanted to recognize her for her dedication. Uh, she served during a very difficult time with COVID and, and all the fun that that brought along, but very good board member, asks a lot of questions and it's a benefit to the community. So thank her for her dedication to that board. I do happen to know a little bit about Dr. Alicia Gray, and I think she's a tremendous addition to this board and I thank her for applying. So there's not any other discussion. I would entertain a motion to appoint Dr. Alicia Gray to the Board of Health of, of April 1st. So got a motion by Commissioner Jones. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Richards. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favors, if I was saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose nay. Motion's unanimous. Final item before heading into executive is a request to restaff a vacant position in the road and bridge department. There was a little bit of confusion, um, last meeting, so I'm sure if we should put this under the consent or under action items, um, just because it wasn't necessarily at entry level, because there was an increase and I believe it was the step on this one. So Brent here to help answer any questions as well as Gene, but I thought I'd bring it before you all. Any questions for staff?
Mr. Chairman, let me just comment. Um, I, I, I think the question that you had arose basically because of what took place with my action pulling an, an item from the consent agenda at our last meeting. Um, I, I have talked with Dean on this. I've also had a conversation with Gary McLean. This is just, I see this just a little bit differently, and I think we could have handled this under consent agenda under my interpretation of how we're handling these. What's being done each time there are vacancy and we receive one of these and we have put them on our consent agenda. HR has taken the potential for what our health insurance costs could be and what the highest level of service that that person might be abiding, uh, as they enter the, our, our pay plan is. And so that's what is being reflected here as the potential $35,000 increase in our budget. I think this is slightly different than what took place with the item that I asked to, to pull from the last agenda in the respect that in it, we had a person who was going to come in at a, a different step and at a different grade. And because of that, we had a finite amount that we were going to be paying within our budget to increase that rather than just hiring across the same position. So because of that, I think we could handle it. Uh, in my mind, as a consent agenda, I would have no problem with that. And I have no problem with, I just wanted to clarify the position from last meeting.
Thanks, Commissioner. I so with that, I guess I need a little clarification. I understand your concern, but most of the time I believe HR is kind of planning for the worst, so to speak, just because, you know, if they, on the law enforcement example, if they have an entry level, it's going to be at a lower grade and step that would have, you know, they got someone from City Rock Springs Police or right of the case maybe. And so rather than us approving at that tree level and then, you know, the sheriff hires one that's more qualified and then has to come back before us again, just kind of planning on a worst case scenario. So
Right.
Are you comfortable with that?
I am.
Okay.
Yes.
So just kind of keep doing it how we have been.
Yeah, I think so. If, if there's one where there's something specific that I see that was different, that, you know, I would pull it off in the future, but I, I think what, what they're doing, I believe is fine. I, I just felt like that one issue was somewhat different than what we've been doing here. So, but I, I think this one falls under the normal purview of what we are handling. So.
Okay.
Thank you.
Mr. Jim.
Mr. Tom.
So you could hire anybody from step two, step five, you don't know at the point, right?
Yeah, that's, I mean, that's how it goes. And the hard part is they always do worst case because
Right.
I mean, I can't hit an interview and go, oh, you have family insurance? No, we hire you because it's not there. So what we do is we, uh, HR always gives you the worst case scenario. We would get somebody with a grade three, four or five. You know, chances are will probably be a one or a two. Um, you know, the interesting thing about this is for that first six months on probation, they're at a step one anyway. That's how they are. So until we go through all their year of service and everything like that, and for the first, you know, they typically has three years of experience, what we require. So that automatically cut off the top. The next five years are for a one-to-one, and then for every year after that, it's a two-to-one. So it's pretty hard to get somebody to a step five. Um, you know, this position, um, to make a long story short, is actually a backfill. Our mechanic, head mechanic retired back in or, um, left to go with another company in December. Um, we backfilled them with our mechanic one, moved him up. Um, we came to you guys and asked to interview for mechanic twos. Mechanic two came in, there was actually a guy that was in Road and Bridge that was interested in it. We tried him out for a month, works, he knows what he's talking about. It wasn't all fluff. So now backfill in this position, the guy that we actually hired, he was, he's, he'll be at a step one. So that's where the discrepancy is where, you know, typically what you guys see is somebody that is retired, but is more likely a step four, five or something like that. So that shrinks that, uh, down. But this one, you know, he's a step one. So that's where it was at.
Any other discussion? I entertain a motion to approve the rest of vacant position in the road and bridge department as presented. Motion by Commissioner Richards. Do we have a second?
I would second.
Second by Commissioner Tom. Further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favors, if I was saying aye.
Aye.
Pose nay. Motion's unanimous. Thanks for coming, Brenda. Sorry you had to sit there for so long.
I have a question for Gene, another one.
Better make a ask, Commissioner.
I'm going to take my time. Uh, is this for a specific area position or, or you just use him in the county wherever it's needed?
Uh, it's for an equipment position, which is everybody that's not a mechanic or a foreman. Um, as I just told everybody in our safety meeting that we had last week, check who pays. It says Sweetwater County on it. It doesn't say Rock Springs Road Bridge. It doesn't say Rock Springs Road Bridge, Green River. It doesn't say Rock Springs Road Bridge, Rock Springs or Wamset. We will put you where we see fed where based on what's happening.
Other discussion after the question for discussion? It is T. Commissioner Richards.
I just, I just wanted to point out earlier, we were discussing some bills that passed and, and I forgot to mention in my moments, Representative Larson's bill H E twenty-three, which Treasurer Cowan was, was an integral part of, of bringing forward that allows electronic registration and a, and a 30-day base period and putting your tags on your vehicles. And was signed by the governor. Uh, so that's a, I think that's a great step forward. Um, and including benefit to our, our constituents and, and allowing them easier way to provide registration uh, for their, their vehicles. Congratulations, Representative Larson and Treasurer Cowan on that.
Yeah, that'll be convenient. Good catch. Um, kudos to both of them. We do have an executive session, Commissioner. We've got a need for this room, which is why I was trying to rush there at the end. So I would like to have the executive next door, Council Rock Room. And we can reconvene back in here, allow for that setup. So at this time, I entertain a motion to enter an executive session to discuss real estate as well as a legal matter. And it is likely anticipated that we will take an action upon coming out.
So moved.
Motion by Commissioner Jones, their second.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Slaughter.